Welcome everyone as you come in and join us. See a lot of people attending, that's fantastic to see so many people interested in showing up. We will get started very shortly with this board meeting. All right, it's looking pretty good for folks coming in. This is the most attendees that we've had in Zoom, which is fantastic. It's wonderful to see all of your names, although I would love to say it's wonderful to see you all, but I can't since I can't see you. We will get started since it looks like everyone is here. I'm going to call to order the, this meeting of South Louis School Board, Board Workshop for today. And I'm going to pass it over to Marty Jackson for our landing acknowledgement.
Thank you, Brooke. Southwoodby School District would like to begin by acknowledging that we gather on the ancestral homelands, originally known as Chaco Liche in the Shute seed of the coastal Salish peoples. On the lands of the Lower Skagit, Tulalip, Swenomish, Snohomish, Stilligwamish, and Suquamish, who have lived in the Salish Sea Basin since time immemorial. They have hunted, fished, and gathered here and have taken care of these lands. We respect their sovereignty and their right to self-determination, and we honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. Please join me in expressing our deepest respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this territory for their enduring care and protection of the land which we currently occupy and share through the Treaty of Point Elliott, signed by eighty-two tribes in Mukeltio on January twenty-second, eighteen fifty-five.
Thank you. As we have so many attendees here, I will be, begin the actually proceedings of the meeting by mentioning that this is a board workshop. This is our opportunity to discuss items on the agenda with the community and we're excited to see so many people here interested in talking about the budget for upcoming year and about the presentation for the notification of threats procedure. Those are the two items on the agenda tonight. We'll talk briefly about what we did in the board retreat that we just finished. And you can see that live streamed from the YouTube site for Southwoodby School Districts. As a board workshop, we are happy to take comments. We want to hear what the community thinks about the topics on the agenda. As we have been doing for this entire Zoom time period, which will hopefully be coming to an end very soon. We will take them via the Q and A function of Zoom. You submit your comment, please include your name, your first and last name and the community you are part of, just Langley, Clinton, Freeland, Coopville, O'Carper, whatever you applies to you. It doesn't need to be any more specific than that. And then myself or another member of the leadership team will read the comment or question. And then we will address it as appropriate. If it is not on the agenda item that we are currently discussing, or does if it does not include your name and location, I will not read it. This is the same idea of if we were in person, we need to know who we're talking to. So again, if you have comments or questions, drop them into the Q and A and we will read them from there. With that being said, we will move on to budget presentation, Mr. Pullman.
Okay, thank you. I want to verify you actually do see the presentation on the screen. Okay, great. So we're looking at the budget for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-one, start September first to September twenty-first and run through August thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. It's still a working budget, so that it will be modified until it's officially accepted by the board, which will happen at a public hearing and meeting on July twenty-eighth. And it'll give the opportunity for the community to talk or against any part of the budget at that time. When we create the budget, we also have to make sure it's a balanced budget, the state law, which is an RCW that basically says that your revenue and your beginning fund balance less expenditures must be greater than zero. We also have a school board policy that requires a six percent funded fund balance in the budget process. So it's all part of the concept we build the budget. Also, the consideration for budget is our vision, our mission, our values, and our student learning goals. So those are all taken into account and the needs that are created by that to create the budget. I'm just a little bit about school accounting. It's a governmental accounting system. It's organized and operated on a fun basis. And we have five different funds in these, and they're each separate funds with different purposes and self-balancing. So it isn't one large fund. So we'll talk about each of these. The general fund is by far largest one. We also have a capital projects fund used for the improvement to buildings, grounds, technology. There's a debt service fund, which is for repayment of long-term debt, principal and interest. The Associated Student Body Fund, which is a special fund that basically generated through student fees and is managed by the students themselves. And then the Transportation Vehicle Fund, which is money that is used for the purchase of large school buses. The general fund, it's the one we talk about the most. It's our largest fund. This year it will be twenty-two million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars for expenditures. And it's financed by a combination of local county, state, and federal sources. And every school district must have a general fund. In the budget development process, there's five major components we have to look at. And the first is student enrollment, and we'll talk a lot about why that's important. And then there's a revenue, and that's created through what is referred to as a political school funding model. It takes a number of students we have and calculates a funding process for that. And then we need to look at staffing. Staffing is important for several reasons. First is the student needs. How many students do we have in first grade? How many teachers we need? What classes those students need at secondary level? And then our collective bargaining agreements also have a impact on how we staff. And then there's the expenditure part of the budget, and that's going to be our payroll costs, our supplies, and our services. And it's a combination of all those things. And then finally, the importance of a fund balance. And if you think about fund balance, it's like your savings account at home. It's for those things that are unexpected. It seems like cash flow, emergency expenditures, and enrollment fluctuations. We look at cash flow, you can see that in seven of the twelve months, we actually have expenditures that are greater than our revenue for that particular month. And there's a real reason for that is the state has an apportionment payment schedule. And state apportionment is the funds we receive from OSBI based on our student enrollment. But it doesn't come in at an equal one-twelfth per month. It fluctuates anywhere between five percent to twelve and a half percent depending on the month. So there's months like November and May that are five percent with corresponds to the collection of local levy funds in the community. But there's also months and it's like July and August that are larger. And that really has to do with the fact that the state fiscal year ends on June thirtieth. So they start a new biennium in July and it frees up more money. So it gives you an idea of why we have a fluctuating revenue. We don't get the same amount every single month. We're talking about state apportionment. It's our funding. And this is one of the big reasons why we have a fund balance. Is that state apportionment is the revenue received based on our enrollment estimates from September to December. So we will budget tonight that say we're going to have, let's say, a thousand eighty-eight students and it'll generate a certain dollar amount. Well, that's not a guaranteed entitlement. What happens is from September through December, OSBI, which is our funding agency for the state, pays is based upon those estimates. And then in January, they look at our actual enrollment from September to December and then recalculate their up or down the amount the district receives, and they will continue to recalculate that through June. And they do that based on student FTE. And student FTE, for those that aren't familiar with that term, is basically if you go full-time for periods a day at the high school, you're a one-point-oh FTE. If you go two periods, you're a point-five FTE. We get funded based on FTE level. So the important part is the funding goes up and down, and it's not a guaranteed, unlike agencies that create a budget, ask their funding organization, whether it be a city, state, county, whatever, to fund them at that level, and then they're guaranteed they're going to get that twenty million dollars. For us, it's based upon students. So we estimate a budget and then it's actually calculated starting at the middle part of our year. And the importance of that is that this is the current year. And you can see that we had budgeted a certain number of students that came to about twelve-point-two million dollars in regular apportionment. In January, they looked at our actual student count and recalculated that apportionment to about eleven-point-seven million dollars. So it went down approximately five-hundred thousand dollars. So without a, a fund balance, we would have been in trouble because our expenditures are locked in. Our contracts, all those things at the beginning of the year are fixed and they are there. So it's really important that we have that fund balance. Then we move into enrollment. We start talking about students. And we're talking about students from a financial standpoint in this presentation only. Because students drive our state funding. It's through the political school funding model. The more kids you have, the more money you get, et cetera. So basically, for every one-point-oh student we have in basic education, we get almost ten thousand dollars. Special ed, similar ALE program is about eighty-seven hundred, and the vocational program for high school, it's a little higher to over ten thousand. And if you saw the numbers we had last year, you would see that basic education, special education was over ten thousand dollars. Actually went down, and when we talk about our benefits, I can tell you why. Retirement rates are lower in the coming year. Insurance is lower than they were a year ago. So we start with enrollment and we look at where we are today. And this is our actual enrollment for the current year, which ended with our June enrollment count. And we, our average for the year, which is what they fund us on, is the state average is about eleven-hundred-and-sixty-seven FTE. And you can see we started kindergarten at about fifty-five kids, gone through the senior year of about eighty-two FTE. And we look at that, we see that we have a few classes, the eighth, ninth, and tenth grades that are above a hundred. And nothing in the lower grades are even close to that. And that's important as we look at the process. We also look at our historical enrollment. We try to calculate where we're going with this. And you can see that we at eleven-sixty-seven, we're down about eighty-six students from where we were last year. But it's not a new or we had a high point of two-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-three student FTE in the year two thousand. And then it started to decline over time. And you can see in the two thousand nine, two thousand ten year, there was a huge drop that year. And again, wasn't unexpected. We had a large graduating senior class and a small kindergarten class replacing them. So it was a natural progression. But you know, we've been on the same process for twenty-one years. But as I look at this, there's something I found interesting in that I went back and looked at the percent change from year to year. And you can see those that are on the bottom of the line are a negative enrollment. But the reality is if you go back even to the mid nineteen nineties, you can see that instead of a growing enrollment percentage change, it was starting to drop prior to the fact when the enrollment hit two-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-three. So it was something that, you know, was showing up a long time before we started to see the enrollment drop. Another way of looking at that is this is our first grade enrollment. And you can see that in nineteen ninety-one, we had about a hundred and sixty students in first grade. And then over the years, it went down to about two thousand fourteen where we hit seventy-five. What I, what I find a little encouraging and what I used when I started looking at our four-year projection is that the kinder or the first grade number started to go back up a little bit. And they, you know, went from seventy-five to eighty-five between two thousand fourteen and two thousand twenty, and then the current year with COVID, it took a big drop. But you know, it had a trend that we were actually starting to grow a little bit as a district, not as fast as we were declining, but a little bit of a change there. So that's very positive. So we need to calculate enrollment for the coming year, and there's several ways of doing that. The first is we could say we have a hundred kids in first grade and we roll them over and we have a hundred kids in second grade. That model is the least effective. We know through history that that doesn't happen that way. A great example is the change between our sophomore and our junior year. We have roughly twenty to thirty kids that'll go into running start, so we no longer can count them for enrollment purposes. So I usually throw that one out, and then the straight cohort survival. You say, okay, we had, you know, a hundred kids in first grade and they moved to second grade and they have ninety kids. We lost ten percent. We use that as a methodology for calculating. And the last one is a weighted cohort survival. That's where we use multiple years. And that's the one that I normally will use that I find to be most effective. And you basically look at that same type of change, what I'm in the second and third grade over multiple years. And you give more weight to what happened last year than you do three years ago. So it's a weighted cohort factor. By using those different models, you can see we come up with different amounts, anywhere from a thousand ninety-one if we use the cohort from the last year, which is the most severe to eleven-fifty if you use a five-year model. And normally the three-year cohort is the one that I use. And using that, we get to about eleven-twenty-one. But it's a little bit different this year. We started a new alternative learning program. And we had about thirty kids that are in basic ed now that decided they'd rather go to that program in the coming year. So that's going to change that eleven-twenty to approximately a thousand eighty-eight in our basic education program. But we're going to have fifty-nine additional students in our alternative learning environment. Last year we had five. So there was a big influx. Not only did we have some kids move, we had another twenty-some kids that have joined that program as of this point. And for funding calculations, we will have about a hundred and eighty-nine students in our special education program, thirty-six going out to running start, about fifty-five in the high school vocational program, and then nine that qualify for our bilingual program. And these are all factors that are used to generate revenue. And these is a, you know, the average from twenty nineteen where our current budget year is and next year's budget. You see that in the year nineteen twenty, we had twelve-hundred-and-forty-eight FTE. We had budgeted twelve-twenty-three. We actually ended up lower than that. And then a thousand eighty-eight. The running start numbers are very similar, but you'll see the ALE numbers went from five to four and a half to fifty-nine. So we are budgeting for all those programs, eleven-hundred-and-eighty-three FTE. In the ALE program, you see out of that fifty-nine that most of them are in the K-five level. And actually, the majority of those are going to be K-four. But there's five in kindergarten, eight in first grade, twelve in second grade, ten in third grade, and fifteen in fourth grade. These are students that have already signed up, are in the system, and we know they want to operate in this particular program. And then we still budget for a few kids who go through Spokane Virtual Academy at the high school level for specific courses. Staffing units, important part, about eighty-five percent of our budget is, yes.
Yeah. Just wanted to bring in a community comment on enrollment. And actually, this is just the right time for it. Kimberly Jackson from Clinton says, what number does kinder enrollment need to be in order to hire a third teacher?
Well, currently, right now at the north campus, we have forty-three students signed up for kindergarten, and we have scheduled two teachers. So it's roughly twenty-one, twenty-two kids in the class. That's a really hard determination to make because we also have kindergarten students that are on the south campus in the swap program. So I, I can't give them a definite, this is a magic number we get to, to get to that third teacher. I think we have to wait and see, you know, two additional students aren't going to make a difference. If we get another fifteen students that might make a difference. Also depends on where they want to go. Do we have capacity to put more kids in the swap program? So I don't have a specific answer for that one. It is something that we monitor, and if we have more students than we have signed up at this point, then we would look at adding another class.
Thank you. And I mean, Jackson from Langley asked, is ALE the homeschool program? That's the, our evolution of the swap program from the West.
Correct. Yes, we were allowed this year to run the, the swap homeschool type program through basic education, but it's actually an alternative learning program. And in the coming year, that's where it will reside, but it is the program that is, you know, resembles the swap that we had in the current year.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, and then we move into staffing. And OSBI has three classifications of staffing. And again, when we talk about this, we're talking about funding models, but they have their sophisticated instructional staff, classified staff, and administrative staff. And the reason that they're differentiated, and we talked about that, is because there's different funding levels for each of those. We talked about the political school model. This is how schools in the state of Washington are funded. They look at the number of students you have, and if you use elementary as an example, for every four hundred kids, you get one-point-two-five-three funding for principals. Doesn't mean that's how many you have. It just means that's the funding that you get. And guidance counselors, you know, which this one's a little odd for me, but with four hundred kids, you get half of a guidance counselor for an elementary school. So it they're not actual funding because they're not always realistic, but it's the model we use. So they calculate what they call staffing units, and it's based upon student enrollment. And you can see that this is the amount that the state has funded over the years, and we had twelve-hundred-and-sixty-eight kids. We had almost sixty-seven certificated staff, twenty-one classified and five administrators. Now at eleven-twenty-one, it's fifty-seven certificated, eighteen classified, and a little or four administrative. So as you have fewer kids, they create fewer staffing units in their funding model. The other thing that's important to understand as we talk about budget is that not everybody we hire is funded through that model. You'll see the green line is about twenty-five FTE, and the blue is forty-seven. The green is what's funded through OSBI from the state of Washington. The blue is what we actually have. So we have roughly twenty classified staff that we are paying a hundred percent salary and benefits for. And it isn't that we don't need those staff. It's just that the funding model doesn't allocate for that. This is just a quick breakdown of what are people doing? If we look at this, and you can see on the left side, it's certificated staff. On the right side, it's classified staff. And then a percent of, you know, what that is. So if you look at teaching out of roughly eighty FTE, seventy-one of those are going to be the classroom-type teachers. About five in the guidance counseling areas, about five in the health-related. And we talk about health-related, a lot of that is going to be special education specialists in that category. And then some is professional learning. So out of the eighty or so, most are classroom teachers and the rest are support. And then the classified staff in the teaching area, we have about fifteen FTE, and we talk about FTE for staffing. Classified's a little different. Where classified staff FTE is based on two thousand eighty hours, somebody working eight hours a day, two hundred and sixty days a year. Most of our classified staff don't work that type of schedule. So they're not going, even if you are, you know, working the full school year, seven hours a day, you're not going to be a one-point-oh FTE because you don't get to that level. So it's a little different than what, I don't want people to think that we're talking about, we have fifteen people in the teaching, parent educator, secretary of staff. We have a lot more than that with FTE anyways. And then it supports another five, a lot of classified staff work in what we call support areas, which is food service, transportation, maintenance, grounds, custodial, et cetera. And the last two categories are administration, you have your principal's office, and then you have central administration, which is superintendent's business office, supervision, et cetera. So all total about eighty-eight FTE for certificated staff, about fifty-seven and a half FTE for classified staff in those two categories. So once we look at how the state allocates the staffing units based upon enrollment, we then start to calculate revenue. And the general fund has five main categories that we get funding from. The first is our local property taxes. We go out to the community, we ask for, you know, a dollar amount in property taxes for the general fund and for capital projects fund, and the voters vote on that. We also look with district-generated funds, which are things that are generated within the district itself, and we talk about what those are. We have the state apportionment, which is based upon the student FTE. And then we have what's referred to as categorical programs, that state and federal funding that is for a specific purpose. It can only be used for that purpose, otherwise we have to return the money, such as special education or learning programs or a title program or something like that. So they're very specific on what they can. And a lot of them actually have a lot of rules around them. The one thing you'll notice about our revenue is that there's been a shift this year. On the left, you see that seventy-six percent of our funding came from the state, six percent from the federal government. Next year, seventy percent is coming from the state, and twelve percent is coming from the federal government. We'll talk about the American Rescue Plan, and all the funds that are coming through that are one year. So the black, the local levy, this is now referred to as an enrichment levy. It was changed a few years ago. But what do we use it for? Well, it's for athletic programs and the travel costs that go with that. It's for those staff that are not funded or underfunded, as we talked about classified staff, about half being funded by the state, half being funded local dollars. Or underfunded, MTOCs, MTOCs are material supplies and other costs. Utilities and insurance are two big ones that pop up. If you look at our utility costs and add, you know, insurance, insurance is now about two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars a year for liability insurance. Two years ago, it's a hundred and eighty, so it's growing very quickly. Our food service program, our revenue doesn't cover that. Transportation, our revenue doesn't cover all those costs. And then anything that's negotiated, it's not covered by the state. So there's a lot of different things that that levy picks up, and so it's a very important part of our budget. Our levy used to be a situation where we could go out and ask for a certain dollar amount, and the voters approved four million, eighteen thousand dollars in twenty-one and four million, nineteen thousand dollars in twenty-two. Well, with the McCreary decision, they changed the local levy capacity. And for our district, it became a limit by student FTE. So we are limited to a certain dollar amount, which this year happens to be a little over two-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars times the number of students we have. And that puts a limit on what that levy collection is. So what we're seeing is that in our two thousand twenty-two levy, instead of the four million plus, we have to roll back or not collect a little or six-hundred thousand dollars of that. So really, we are collecting about three-point-four million of the four million that the community approved. One bright spot in this is that, understanding that most districts have a reduced enrollment count for the current year due to the pandemic, they're allowing us to use the nineteen-twenty FTE as a whole harmless, which allows us to claim a larger dollar amount. If it wasn't for that, we would probably suck a couple hundred thousand dollars less than what we are doing. So our levy for the coming year, which is a combination of the two years, we collect some in the fall and some in the spring. So they're on two different calendar years, though it's our fiscal year, is about three-million-three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars. But you can see that, you know, if we go back to seventeen, eighteen, it was over four million dollars. Then McCreary dropped in, it went to three-point-seven, three-point-three. Little bit of a bump for this year because of using a previous account, but you'll see then in the following year, it'll also drop due to the number of students. So we'll use a current year student number and it'll reduce that. So the reality for levies is that there is no increase in the levy amount. It used to be that, you know, we could ask for a little more every year, or even with the student ratio part of it, with the same number of students, the dollar amount would escalate a little bit, and that would increase, but that hasn't happened for us. And then we have the local non-tax, which is the district-generated funds, and that's the And then we have the local non-tax, which is the district generated funds, and that's things like donations, um, that community gives us uh rental fees uh through the community center or some of the other facilities we have. Local food service fees, uh, and we'll talk about those a little later, but that would normally be the money that we would generate by charging full price meals in our kitchen. But because there's been a change um for us for next year and we can provide free meals for all students, that won't show up so much. And then any fees that students um pay uh in the schools, the traffic safety program, um, investment earnings, money we receive for investing, our fund balance, that type of thing. The third part is state apportionment, and this is the majority of our funding. And that's funding that is based upon the number of staff that they designate based on enrollment and then multiplying that by a per staff allocation. And that I want to make sure there's an understanding of what that per funded staff allocation means, because there's a real implication for us. With McCleary, they changed the funding model. It used to be for a teacher, if we had somebody based on their education experience, we'd pay them a dollar amount. We'd send them out from the state. Well, they changed that so that every district gets a base salary allocation across the state, no matter where you live, of the same amount for certificated, classified and administrative staff at different levels. And then they created something called regionalization. And we were one of the seven districts that came in with a regionalization of twenty four percent. Um, but the difficulty is that reduces over time. It's a regressive model that started twenty four percent and then eventually ends up at an eighteen percent. So we are getting less over time. And then there's an experience factor, which is only for certificated staff. It's additional four percent. So what does that really mean? Well, if we look at that funding level and you see the middle part of the box where it's circled, you'll see that for all classifications, there's really no increase in the funding. That's not due to who we pay people. It's just a funding model, but for certificated instructional staff hovering around the eighty five thousand, classified around fifty nine thousand and administrative role in twenty two. And that's a direct result of the regionalization, even though the um implicit price later, which I'll refer to as a cost of living increase, so it's really not bad. Um, increases say two percent a year. If we are decreasing two percent a year, you're not seeing a change in the funding model. So that that has created a a difficulty specific for our district. And you see, this is, you know, the funding model for certificated staff. And you see that, you know, even though the bigger blue line gets larger, the gray box gets smaller to equal out of about eighty five thousand dollars. And it's not unique. It's in the classified staff and it's in the administrative staff. It's the exact same process. So what does that mean? Well, if you look at that funding allocation, let's say they are going to fund fifty certificated staff. Was it going to do that at about the eighty five thousand dollar range? If they have, you know, twenty classified staff, they do it at fifty nine thousand, et cetera. So what we see here is that is that part of that formula that is normally going to increase over time as you have an IPD increase in your funding would get larger. It hasn't for Southwoodby. So what does that mean? Well, what it really means is that if you combine the lower student count and that flat funding model, we actually are receiving less money every year than we did the previous year. So we have a revenue growth that is negative rather than a positive. So local levy, about three million three hundred and eighty four thousand, we mentioned that before. The non-tax, the money we generate in the buildings. The only thing that's really different from this year to last year was the lack of school food services and that's the paid meals. We are no longer going to do that. Um, you know, it's wonderful that we can provide. And I I do want people to hear this and understand that we can provide free meals to every student that goes to school. You don't have to apply. You don't have to do anything. It's the part of the federal program that they're running right now that allows every child, regardless of income or status or anything else, to have a free meal. So they go through the line, but it does affect us here at about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, this is our apportionment and this is where the the some of the bigger changes are. And you'll see that this is a number that's gone down about a million dollars over a period of two years. So that's a result of basically lower enrollment. You also see that there's a, you know, a special education general um fund drop about half of a percent. And that or about fifty percent. And that isn't that we're getting less money in the apportionment. It's it's a differential. Um, it used to be, you would look at those two numbers together, say that twelve million seven hundred and fifteen thousand. And they would take a percent of the total amount and they would redirect to special education. Well, that percent for us has changed so that more is going to basic education, less for special education, but we're still collecting a million dollars less. Other than that, the state money is very similar. The only difference is that, you know, it's going to be less because it's predicated upon your enrollment. So the special education is based upon the hundred and eighty nine students we expect to have in the coming year. All the other ones below that are based on last year actual. And knowing that last year we had a less of enrollment um than the year before, it goes down. Transportation actually goes up a little bit and that's another one of those beneficial decisions made at the state level that they allowed us to use a prior year calculation for transportation as a whole harmless, knowing that we will be transporting again and we hadn't spent as much as we would in normal years. The normal transportation calculation is the greater of your student ridership numbers, which calculates revenue or your expenditures from last year or and last year would have been less. So anyways, so it's that. And the other one, this is other state agencies, that's just a capacity line. There's a hundred thousand in revenue and expenditures that it's not assigned to anything, but allows us to get additional grants without doing a budget revision and going through and a process through SPI where we have to submit and have them approve that. The federal dollars, here's where there's a a big change. Um, the one in red is basically school food services. This traditionally would have been our free and reduced meals that we got reimbursed for. Now it's all meals. So that's almost doubling because of the local funds and the federal funds all become federal funds. The one that's highlighted is a result of the American um Rescue Plan. The money coming through the federal government to get businesses and agencies back to work. Uh, it's about two million dollars. Um, and some of it has very special purposes. The one that says AARP IDA is special education. But it's to address learning loss and a variety of things we have in there. So we'll we'll talk a little bit about, you know, how we're spending that money a little later. Those are the 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 big difference when we talk about the budget. You see that we're going from about almost a million dollars to almost three million dollars. But two million dollars is those federal funds. And again, those are a one-time only federal fund. So we can't continue to spend them year after year. We can only have them for the current um year. So just a quick revenue, we add those up. You see that our revenue is going to be twenty one million five hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and forty three if our enrollment comes in as projected. Could be higher, could be lower if enrollment changes. Um, very similar to what we had two years ago, um, as far as dollar amounts. But it's a little bit different in that two million of the of the current year is going to be federal funds, which is not something we count on. Um, negotiations, we have agreements with three as in principals. We're still negotiating with PSC and SEIU. Have may have an effect on the budget. I tried to calculate expectations, though I have no idea what that it really is. So I don't think it's going to be, you know, a huge impact, but it is an unknown at this time. Then we get into the expenses part of the budget. So we've we figured out how much money we think we're going to have. Yes.
I just wanted to uh put a space in here for a breath for you and to ask any of the board members if they have any questions at this point. Uh, we have some community questions that have come in that are on previous topics that I will save until we get to the general questions period at the end. But if there are any questions from board on revenue, uh, now now would be the time. Nope, doesn't look like it. Okay, uh, go on, Mr. Pullman.
Well, thank you for the break. I appreciate that. Okay, so we have an idea what our revenue may be if everything works out the way it's supposed to be. So now we start looking at expenditures. And when we look at expenditures, there are several different ways we look at expenditures. Our expenditures are broken down by program, such as basic education, special education, et cetera, um, by activity, we'll look at that. And then also by object code, and we'll look at that and do a comparison. But you'll see that in um basic education, we are going, you know, less than we had budgeted for the previous year. But also an increase in alternative education. So those fifty nine students are going to generate about a hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. So more than the amount we are are going to cost us about a hundred and ninety seven thousand in expenditures. Um, but you can see that basic education, regular instruction, looks like it goes down about six hundred thousand. Part of that is because of those federal special purpose funds. We can use those for learning loss, to reduce class size. So what we've done with some of that money is we retained additional teachers to lower our class sizes. So they are now funded through the federal special purpose funding rather than through the regular instruction funding. So some of that money, you know, has been moved from the top to the second column. And then we look at special education. It's very similar to where it was last year. Um, there is fifty two thousand six hundred and ten dollars new in federal money, which is a one-time use only. But there's also less in the federal special education funding that we receive. So there's going to be lower costs in those programs because in these in these type of programs, um, the revenue and the expenditure have to match. We can't expend more than we, you know, could claim. It has been moved to a different program. And then our vocational program for high schools is about the same as six hundred and sixty three thousand. So other than the federal funding, um, there's not a lot of difference in most of these expenditures by program. The next section is basically grants, you know, your title programs, remediation programs, uh, learning assistance programs. You know, those types of things. They are also down a little bit. And again, a lot of these programs are based on the previous year's student enrollment. So as the enrollment gets smaller, those numbers that are going get smaller also. Uh, the other instructional programs are traffic safety is a revenue expenditure neutral type program. They charge fees to pay for the traffic safety or driver's ed program. Highly capable, again, based on the previous year um enrollment. So again, it's smaller than it was. And then the one is zero that was a hundred and two last year. That was some, the first round of ESR funds that came out in the current year, which we have spent, that won't be there next year. Um, and then the community services is basically the community center. So looking at, you know, we're still trying to revamp and get that thing up and running again. So expenditure is a little lower there. And then district wide services, we talked about district wide services in there. In program ninety seven, you're going to see things like the board directors, superintendent, business office, HR. Cust- uh custodial, maintenance, all the things that are spread across the district. So a slight increase in that. Food service is about the same, transportation is up a little bit. So there's a slight increase in those. And then going from about twenty one point three million to about twenty two point three million. And a lot of that increase in expenditures is due to those federal funds that we received. Activity is another way of of looking at expenditures. We're looking at the same dollar amounts, but in different ways, you know, teaching activities, teaching support, support activities. And I wouldn't pay much attention to the percent of total, you know, in a normal year I would do that. But with those federal funds coming in, we put quite a bit of money into supplies and services. Not sure how we're going to spend them yet, so they will skew that picture. You know, they may end up in salary, they may end up at someplace else, but we don't know. But what you can see by looking at the budget amounts is that, you know, if we take teaching, you can see that it's an increase every year in that area. Extracurricular is predominantly athletics, so there's a few other stipend things in there. And then teaching support are things like libraries, counselors, health services, et cetera. The one you see a a big increase from, um, there's a a couple. One is guidance and counseling. We've added another um person at the elementary school to work with social emotional learning next year. Um, and using ESR funds to pay for that for one year only thing. Um, the other one is the professional learning, the two hundred and three thousand dollars. And that's money we received from the state of Washington, um, which we haven't broken out in the past before. We normally wouldn't leave it in teaching, but it's three days of professional development that paid for by the state that we have to report under activity thirty four in the future. So as I created the budget, I actually just set those up under activity thirty four, so they come out of payroll automatically for those three days. So a slight increase in there, um, but most of it being that additional, you know, professional learning dollars. Uh, support activities, stuff about those are for, you know, food service, uh, maintenance, transportation. The all very similar, um, and there are a few things that have gone up a little bit. And that maintenance, custodial and in- insurance are the three that popped to mind. As we move back into a full-time operation, the number of people we need in support programs is going to change compared to where we were in a remote operation. So it's going to change that. And then just that insurance thing and, you know, two years ago, we paid a hundred and eighty thousand. Currently it's two hundred and twenty five, it's going to two hundred and forty three. So that's one of those areas that I keep an eye on because that's a a big jump in expenditure with no revenue to offset that. Because, you know, we don't get paid specifically for, you know, costs like that. So it's it's that type of thing. Other than that, most of them are very similar to where they've been in previous years. There's also administration. You see that there's a slight increase in the building administration and actually a slight decrease in central administration as far as it's the total costs that are in those two areas. One of the questions, you know, yes.
Uh, can you go back a page?
Yes.
Uh, I had a quick question about the money sent uh set aside for the board of directors. And I was curious how much of the budgeted money we actually used last year.
Well, thank you for asking that. I will tell you. So here's the school board budget. And in the current year, it's seventy thousand five hundred. Your date, you spend about sixty six thousand four hundred and eighty. And I'm budgeting eighty nine thousand for the coming year. And I'll explain what those are so you see how this money is spent. The first is we budget money in case there's general supplies you may need, um, which you didn't have spent it in here today. The next is services and it's things like um belonging to WASDA, the National School Board Association, paying for board docs, the program that does the minutes, those type of services. So there's that piece. There's also board election fees. We pay Island County every time we have an election for school board members. And we have three elections coming up, so we're planning that we will most likely need about eighteen thousand dollars to cover those three. Uh, the current year, it's a hundred and seventy six dollars ninety cents. And what that really is, is property taxes. We pay a very small fee to the, and it comes in the board of directors, which I don't know why it does, but it does according to the accounting manual. Um, and then there's legal fees. So currently we spend a little over seven thousand. We budget about ten thousand a year for we need those services. One of the big ones is the state auditor fees. We have to be audited every year. And the current year audit was almost forty four thousand dollars. Next year, they're not going to look at quite as many areas, so it should be a little less. But it's it's one of those things that we don't have any control over. You know, we are required to be audited by the state. They determine their fees, they determine what they look at, how much time they spend. So unfortunately, you know, it's a large dollar amount, but it's out of our controls. And then um just travel and that's basically sending the the school board to the um school board conference in the state of Washington on an annual basis. So that's the breakdown of the school board. So most of it is things that the school board is not spending.
Thank you very much. I was just curious. The the state auditor fees bumping that up so much makes a ton of sense. And that that exposed, I was like, I was trying to figure out how we were spending seventy two thousand dollars, but uh having thirty to forty of that be the state auditors fees makes a whole lot more sense to me. Thank you very much.
And the other part of that is the the election fees through Island County. Every time we have a change of board, it it costs us money. So yeah. Um, and then last way we look at expenditures is through objects. This is the one we probably pay more attention to. And they're larger categories. So it's basically salary, benefits, supplies, services and travel. And it's broken down by, again, the same classifications state uses, certificated salaries, classified salaries and then employee benefits, payroll taxes. You see that those three are the bulk of our budget. You know, it usually ends up being in the eighty four to eighty five percent of the budget cost. And again, you know, numbers that, you know, climb throughout the year based upon throughout the year based upon negotiated agreements, salary increases, those type of things. The one that is interesting and may seem a little odd to people is that the benefits of payroll taxes, even though the payroll costs go up, has gone down. And that's a direct result of a direct result of the changes in the retirement rates and some of the things we pay. And I'll, I'll show you that in a moment. But, you know, the point is that those are some very big parts of our budget. The other thing is purchase services, you see it goes from one point eight million to almost two point eight million. It's easy to explain, well, one, you know, insurance went up and some of those things. But the majority of that is those federal funds. We have about eight hundred thousand dollars in each one of those, in a combination of those grants that we're receiving, that we haven't identified yet how we're going to spend. We have about one point two million that we have identified as costs for specific purposes. But, you know, we have the suspend and it's just in services at this time until we determine. And it may end up in salary, it may end up in supplies, it may end up being on a variety of areas. But it's just sitting there and it kind of skews that picture, which is one of the reasons I said, don't pay too much attention to that percent of total, because it really skews that total. The Ben.
Yeah. There there's a question in the chat who's asking you to go back and explain a little bit more about the election line item.
Sure.
And it might be a good time to go back and do that.
Yeah, the election item. Whenever we have a school board election, or we have a levy ballot, or anything like that, that goes out to the community for votes, we are charged by Island County to pay for those. So the county doesn't pick up the cost of that, the district actually does. So every time we, you know, expect that we're going to have an election or a levy on the ballot, we have to budget to pay for those.
So just to clarify. More about the actual system and structure of running an election, not engaging in political
Oh.
alignment to or anything like that.
It's not political at all. It is just the mechanics of paying the county to send out the ballots, collect the ballots, count the ballots. It's just a charge we receive by Island County for running an election. Or a levy, whichever it might be. It has nothing to do with the actual election itself. It is just a mechanism of having an election.
Thank you. I'm, I'm actually gonna respond to a community question. I've been saving blocks of community questions and comments for the end of this section. So there are, there's seventeen currently in the queue right now. Those that apply to to our spending will be saved for the end of this section. So Dan, if you could pause at the end of that, this section. I'll get some of those in now. And I will remind folks that during workshops, comment is restricted to the items on the agenda, the ones being discussed. So if you have questions about how something outside of the budget is working, please send us an email. If you have comments on something outside of the budget, you can either send us an email or sign up for public comment during a board business meeting, uh, like we will have at the end of the month. So we have not deleted any questions. We, I, I've been saving them up to bring them in as a group at the end of this section. Thank you.
So wanted to talk a little bit about benefits, so people understand what that is. Because it's a large part of our budget, it's twenty-three point four percent of our total cost. And that includes things like FICA and Medicare, which are percentages, paid family medical leave, which is a state required contribution, retirement rates that run anywhere between, you know, ten to fourteen percent unemployment. And then we have monthly costs that are for insurance, medical insurance, and B V A contributions, which are a negotiated it's cancer voluntary employees beneficiary association plan. It's a tax stamp trust that allows you to pay for eligible medical expenses. And then workers' compensation. And those are kind of all the things that create that, what is referred to as a benefit, because the district pays that aspect of it. And we looked at that, you'll see that, you know, when I had benefits, it actually went down a little bit from the previous year, even though the payroll costs went up. And the reason for that is that the rates went down. So retirement rates went down. Unemployment went up a little bit, we didn't have unemployment last year. But, you know, due to our situation now, we have increased that. The monthly medical premium went down from a thousand dollars to nine hundred and sixty-eight. And then the one I, I like is that the workers' compensation rates went down, which basically means we have less claims in that area. The other side of this, it doesn't just affect your expenditures. It also affects your revenue, because we talked about them creating staffing units at a certain dollar level. Then they apply benefits on those. So instead of for certificate instructional staff adding fourteen point four-two percent in the coming year for retirement benefits, sixteen percent, they're only gonna add fourteen point four-two. Instead of a thousand dollars for medical, it's gonna be nine hundred and sixty-eight. So they're actually, the rates that we receive as part of the revenue is also lower corresponding to the reduction in expenditures. But remember, there's a lot of funding costs that we pay for as a district, not state-funded. So this is actually beneficial as a district to see lower rates. So just a quick look at of those different things that we've talked about. And you see that medical insurance is thirty-nine percent of our, of our benefits. Retirement's thirty-three percent, Medicare and FICA about nineteen percent. And then the other nine percent are gonna be B V A, workers' comp, and unemployment, paid family medical. So there are really three big chunks that, you know, make up that five point two million dollars that we're talking about are those three categories. I have to also disclose how much we receive for M Talks. Again, material services and other costs from the state of Washington. How much the district actually budgeted, and what's the difference? And the difference is two hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, which comes from our local levy, or it comes from our local funds. That also includes, you know, donations and things that we receive in that category. So it's just a, it's just a require, a state requirement, if I tell you this, it really has no impact on anything. So just a quick summary, spending about twenty-two million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Last year we had budgeted a little over twenty-one point three million. So there's about a million dollar difference in there. A, a large percentage of that is going to be those federal funds. And this is just a quick summary of student enrollment, certificated F T E, classified F T E, our revenue, our expenditures, our beginning fund balance and ending fund balance. You'll see that, you know, we're projecting to end the year with four point one five million in fund balance and spend down fund balance to offset the difference between the revenue and the expenditure of about three million, three hundred and fifty, down to about three hundred million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand. So we're gonna use some fund balance because our revenue is lower than our expenditures. And then just a summary breakdown of those different categories again. I think we are done with expenditures. So questions?
Real quick, Dan. I just want to clarify for those who don't necessarily live and breathe in school budgets. The fund balance, we have a six percent requirement required to maintain by the board, and that's our safety net, our savings account. We have been intentionally planning, knowing that the McCleary money is going to decrease, to keep that over six percent, so that we can maintain the level of services and supports that we have to students as that McCleary money decreases. The other piece that I want to clarify is that with certain areas like categorical programs, that money can only be spent in those areas. And if it's not spent, it's returned to O S P I, with the exception of sometimes being allowed to have like ten percent carryover. So just to clarify for people listening in at home, that there isn't really kind of ever extra money. Because if there is extra money, it's usually been restricted in how it can be spent. And so if it is not spent for the purpose for which it was given, then it is rightfully returned back.
Yes, you're correct. If we look at our funding, the, the part that says regular instruction, those funds we can spend anywhere in basic education or special education. But all the rest of the funds, including the federal funds, which are large this year, are very specific in their use. And if they're not used for that purpose, and they are, they are audited. And that's one of the things the auditors do look at. They go through all our federal funds and make sure that we met all the criteria as far as bidding and, and receipting and appropriate use and all those things. And, but if they're not used, then we do have to return them. So, yeah, we can't just keep those even though we, we want to. So like, when I showed that we had eight hundred thousand dollars in capacity for federal funds, we have to spend the eight hundred thousand dollars. We still don't know how we're gonna spend it yet. If we don't, then we don't receive it. So it isn't like it's just extra money that we can put in our fund balance.
And there was a question from the community about that, uh, from Kimberly Taxney in Clinton, to, uh, could we put a plan in place so that we can use the extra money that you mentioned that was mentioned? It's not actually extra, it's, we just haven't budgeted exactly where it's going yet. Could a plan be put in place so that those funds can be used to benefit the students directly? And I know that the administration has been working on exactly how to spend those S R funds. And most, if not all of the details are locked down now. Dr. Moshe, do you have anything to add on that?
I do. They will go directly to student support. Some of the unknowns are, for example, do we need that extra teacher because we want to keep the class sizes low? Or will we need additional supplies for students? So it's not that we don't know, it's that we don't specifically know how we're gonna use them to benefit students. But that's exactly where it'll be directed to.
The other part of that is with that, those eight hundred thousand dollars, we don't have to spend it all in the coming year. We actually have two years that we can spend it. So it may be that we need some of it the following year to... But it's very specific what the purposes are. It's defined by the federal government and what it's to be used for and how it's to be used. So it isn't, it isn't just that we have eight hundred thousand dollars, we get to spend it however we wish. It, it is very, you know, we talk about categorical federal funds are very stringent on what the use is and, and how we use those funds.
Uh, we do have a couple of other questions on spending here that I'll bring in now. Kathleen Warren from Clinton, how much revenue is being spent on social justice and sex ed curriculum? Is that something that you have on hand, or is that something that we can have Kathleen email us and we can provide that information?
What we can say is that we haven't changed our sex ed program. So the spending would be the same for that particular program. And our ethnic studies course, if that is what is being referred to, I'm not sure what social justice is referring to. But that course is a freshman course. And the social studies course that is Eastern European and Western European will be combined into one and called World History. So we're not spending additional funds on social justice if that's what's being referred to as social justice. But I don't know what that question, that part of the question is referring to.
I would expect, and I haven't read ahead, the person may have mentioned, I would expect they, they're also curious about the state mandated equity training.
The equity training is required by the state for all of our staff, and they fund one day of it. We're providing about thirty-two hours. And we also have federal dollars in Title II that will also be funding it. It's an approximate cost of between forty-nine and fifty thousand dollars for the school year for staff training for all of our staff.
Thank you. If any other school board members have questions, I'm reading through the current Q and A right now to see if there's anything else in regards to spending.
I think just a clarifying comment might be helpful, Brooke. In that, uh, school district, uh, or school districts are required to do an annual budget presentation, and that's what we're doing right now. So that the board is informed on making, on passing the upcoming school year budget. So that's why the majority of this workshop is being dedicated to this presentation in particular.
So on July twenty-eighth, we'll present the budget to the board in a briefer form. And that's why we're spending so much time now. So you can get a clear understanding and getting questions answered and see if there's any directions you want us to change on it. But it is a requirement that you do approve the, the budget. And for a school district of our size, it has to be done by the end of July.
Uh, there, there is, has been one other question here about fund spending from Margaret King in Clinton. How much of the school board funds go toward training with Hooks Global and other trainings? I believe that, Joe, you addressed that. Sorry, Dr. Moshe, that you addressed that already, but is that the?
The total cost of that training is between forty-nine and fifty thousand dollars. The majority of it is paid between federal funds and what O S P I provides for a day of training. I don't specifically of that forty-nine, I believe we've covered almost all of it through those two grants. There may be some district dollars spent on that.
And I do want to note, uh, there have been some questions about why some comments have not been read. A reminder that this is a board workshop, which means we discuss items that are on the agenda right now. We're discussing the budget. I'm only reading questions and comments on the budget. Uh, there are a few others from previous parts in the budget that I will get to at the very end of the budget presentation when we get to the general purpose questions. Right now, uh, Mr. Poland, go ahead.
Yeah, going back to that previous question, the state actually funds three days of professional development for our certificated instructional staff. So the reality is that it is being totally funded at the state level. We do have federal professional development money that could be used for it. But we are required to provide three days of training with at least one of those days being around equity. So they are funding actually the entire cost. Okay, so we have other budgets that we need to have you approve in the, in the hearing process. Capital projects fund, the debt service fund, the S B fund, and transportation vehicle fund, much smaller funds. And I, I promise won't take hardly any time to go through. Okay, so capital projects fund. This is the one that is funded with our property taxes. And it can be used for basically two major purposes. The first is for the application, modernization of technology. So we use it and have done a really nice job of creating technology opportunities for our students. And the others, the major maintenance repairs of facilities, whether it be roofs or heating systems or whatever. Now moving. So we get about two point two five million dollars to the levy. We also have, you know, line nine for eight hundred thousand dollars. And I'll explain that because it's kind of an oddity in this year's budget. We have a FEMA grant for work to do on the gymnasium at the community center, tying the anchors and the roof together and all that type of stuff. It's about eight hundred thousand dollars left in that grant. So we have eight hundred thousand dollars in revenue, eight hundred thousand dollars in expenditures. And that's why you'll see the buildings are two point eight million dollars, because eight hundred thousand, that is potentially for, for the community center. So look at that, there's about a little over three million dollars in revenue. And then we have a fund balance of about one point one five million that we will roll forward. So that's money that we currently have, that we've, uh, projects planned for, but we haven't projects planned for, but we haven't completed those projects. So that's why you see about $2 million in buildings, because there's current costs that we are going to pay out next year because construction has really slowed down as far as getting things done. So there's kind of a time like about almost 1.3 million in technology. So we're gonna receive about $3 million in revenue. We have a 1.1 million fund balance to add to that. And then then about 4 million with an ending fund balance of $68,000. These funds, unlike the general fund, don't have a requirement for a minimum fund balance. Because basically, we spend the money we receive as we receive it. So we only do as many projects as we have cash for in that particular year.
Quick community question here. While we're on the topic, Kimberly Taxney says, is there any plan with maintenance funds to clean up the high school building and grounds?
Capital projects funds. I'm not sure what she means by cleaning up the grounds, but if it's typical groundwork, we can't use capital projects funds for that. If we wanted to tear up the asphalt and lay more asphalt down, you know, a major project like that, we can use capital projects fund. So I guess I'm not sure what it is that's actually being asked as far as cleaning up the grounds.
Answered the question, at least from the capital projects fund perspective. Yeah, there's the question that it might be in regards to siding.
Yeah, well, what I've asked JJ, our facilities director, to do is to do a presentation to the board in the fall about capital needs. And what projects we need to do, how much that's going to cost? Do we have enough money going through a levy? Do we need to look at a different process of, you know, maybe a bond or some? I do know that the siding came in at about $4 million. The staging alone, just to set up the stuff around the building was a million dollars. So it's not something that we could do with the levy because we can't do it in sections. You know, if you have staging costs that are that large, you can't do it more than once. So that's one of those questions that, you know, if we're going to do something major like that, we have to consider a bond. And a bond is basically where you go out, you get the money upfront and pay it back over time. What we've been doing with capital projects is collecting the money and then doing the projects. So two different processes, but a bond allows you to do larger projects. So just to break down, $2 million towards building, some of that's carryover of projects that are currently in place. The community center FEMA grant and then technology. Debt service. This is going to be a transfer. As a district, we no longer have any bonds. Those were paid off in previous years. So what we do have is we have a loan through the state of Washington. And so we're transferring money from capital projects, $87,000 this year into the debt service fund to pay that principal and interest payments on that loan. And so it's about $87,000 roughly is what the payment is. And that's what we transfer in and then have a very small ending balance. We're almost done with that process. This is a $780,000 loan that allowed us to do a lot of energy upgrades several years ago. And it was one of those programs where the savings in energy offset the cost of the expenditure. So where we were saving $100,000 in electrical costs, we were spending $90,000 some thousand dollars in the payment. We're almost through that process. We have three more years and we will be totally paid. So this coming year, we will spend about $75,000 on the principal, six or 12,000 on interest for a total of 100 and and leave $165,000 balance going into the into the following year. So that is almost complete, which is real nice to see. And then we will continue to have those savings.
We had a question from the community from Aileen Jackson Langley. What is the FEMA grant for the community center? And I believe that you you mentioned that that was the structural support for the roof and at the of the gym, was it?
Right. It's a federal grant that we received several years ago, and it's been a really slow process because of construction issues with COVID. But basically what it does is it anchors the foundation to the walls, walls to the roof. So in case of an earthquake, you're not going to have movement in the building. Student body fund. This was basically non-existent this year without having students in school. We didn't generate revenue. Or, you know, we didn't charge for the athletic programs because they were on mini season and all those type things. So we're budgeting about 159,500 in revenue, 140,000 expenditures, trying to build that fund balance back up because currently their fund balance is a little over $36,000. Traditionally, it had been closer to $100,000, but we had expenditures of the year that we closed without revenue in the spring and the fall to offset that. So that's it's kind of a rebuilding year for the ASB. But it pays for a lot of the athletics classes, clubs, you know, those type things. Again, funds are generated through the students, the students issue the and approve the expenditures and transportation vehicle fund. This is for the purchase of school buses. And basically, the way it works is we buy a school bus, we can depreciate the cost over 13 years of the large bus and the state repays us for that school bus over time. So it's important that we continue to stay on a replacement schedule because if we were get off that schedule and have no funds coming in, we would have gone for a levy in order to buy new school buses. Don't have any funds. So it's actually larger than I expected to be. We have two school buses ordered that are supposed to be here in August. And if they show up in August, we will pay in August and it's $305,000 for those two. But if they don't show up till September, they move into the following year. So I've created a larger budget capacity with a rollover of the funds we currently have in case we can't pay. Bottom line is, we're going to get about $117,000. So we're going to have about that amount to buy a school bus next year if we need to. And that would buy a small bus, it wouldn't buy a large bus. So the likelihood is we may not buy any school buses next year, wait till the following year, and then buy another school bus. So and this is a summary of, you know, all the different accounts, gives you the revenue, the expenditures, how much of fund balance you're using. You see in general fund, we're using almost $800,000 for the fund balance in the coming year. A beginning fund balance and then ending fund balance for each of the accounts. And this is just a historical look at expenditures, and it gives you kind of a look over time. You see that the general fund has grown dramatically over this time period. Capital projects and the rest fluctuate, but they're not really that different. Capital project is really more of a spending when you actually spend things, not how much you're getting, because it's been very consistent about $2.2 million. But it gives you a picture of the district's budget over time. And then I have to give you a four-year preview. And yes.
Before we get into the four-year previews, I think this would be a good time for me to scroll back through and just pick up a few things that were questions asked about previous portions of this and for the rest of the school board members to ask questions, any questions that they have while I'm searching for that. Let's hear. Janet Garo Freeland, thank you for your service as a school board member. You're in a challenging position during difficult times. I'm ready to thank you for the inclusive nondiscrimination statement policy set forth on the district's website. I expect and hope your budget decisions are guided by this nondiscrimination policy. Parents, students and community expect no less. Best regards. Absolutely, our policies have to guide our budget. That is the purpose of these policies. There's a question here from Stino Wenzek of Clinton. How do you explain the declining numbers, enrollment numbers, I expect, coupled with the fact that our population in Island County has doubled in the last 10 years? Proven by the recent redistricting and doubling of precincts and the fact that all the private schools are at or over capacity with waiting lists.
Do you mind if I?
Please.
Lean into this one. So we do look at the reasons why students have left when they unenroll and what our records indicate and what families have reported to us is for the most part, they are moving. And that doesn't mean that more people aren't coming to the island, but whether or not they're coming with school age children is a question. And it's also something during the retreat that we really leaned into conversation about about learning what is it that we don't know that we don't know. And some of that is also, you know, our our student, are we are we receiving accurate information as to why students are leaving? It is one of those pieces that we do want to explore in regards to private schools at or over capacity. I don't know that we can speak to that. We we serve the students that come to to our doors and, you know, we we welcome all of them and we work hard to provide them with a quality education.
Something on that. I just want to point to the US Census Bureau as a source of data about demographics and population change. Because I think that the population fluctuation on would be island and in Island County. It would be great to be able to look at a verifiable source for a statistic of that nature. And I would just recommend that the US Census Bureau does its best to provide that accuracy of information.
On an anecdotal level, as a local business manager, the island is getting older.
And I will share the census, the 2020 census, when it's available. I'm on a waitlist. If I get emails weekly, it hasn't been published as of this morning. And I'd be very interested to see that because I know when I looked at it in 2010, what we saw was a demographic shift that the South would be lower part of our island was becoming much, much older over time. And our largest demographics were, you know, in the 50 to 55 range at that time. And that even in 2010, we had more people on the south end who were over the age of 85 than we did under the age of five. So, you know, as soon as those are available, I will definitely share that with the school board because I'm really interested to see how that has changed over the last 10 years.
Thank you.
From Kelly writes in Freeland, the breakdown of enrollment data indicated that the school district sees these fluctuations as normal. I'm curious if the analysis of the enrollment numbers indicates that you anticipate an increase or or decrease in enrollment. And I think that Dan, as we get into this multi-year plan, you'll be addressing that somewhat. And Kelly, if your question is not answered by the time we're done with that section, please let us know.
Just to jump in here. Our enrollment predictions from the year prior to 2000, but since 2000 have been basically, our enrollment has been as predicted. And the continuous decline. So we'll be curious to see what the census shows us.
I'm just scrolling through. We've got 30, 30 comments here. Many of them are in regards to items that are not on the agenda. So I'm trying to go through those to focus on what is on the agenda. If we were in a board workshop in person and someone started asking questions that are not on the agenda, we would refer them to email, which we will do so here as well. The emails for all of us are on the board website. I don't know, I believe there's a school, a whole school board email. I know that my personal school board email is B. Bwillafford@sw.wednet.edu. And if you send something to there, it will certainly get to the rest of the board as well. I'm just scanning through here. We've Gwendy Hastings from Freeland, can I make a recommendation that in the future that we only do a budget update every meeting unless instead of the whole presentation every time for people who attend regularly, this information is mainly repeated. We're now having spent an hour of this meeting on this. And again, most of this is shared every meeting, just a suggestion. That that's certainly something that we can discuss if the board wishes to do that. Let's see here. I'm just scrolling through here just to see what else has come up. Kathleen Warren Clinton, it is a pretty large discrepancy when 20,000 is being spent on student services and 50,000 on equity training. I believe that that student services is a particular bucket for money that is not the sum total of our student services. We spend a large amount of money on actual student services. Dan, can you address that directly if you have that information? Or a comment?
Yeah, let me go back up to see what they mean by student services because.
And as you're doing that, I note that as Dr. Moshe and Mr. Poland mentioned, those equity trainings come out of allocated budgets from the state and federal level also.
Yes, I need to clarify, we're talking about this general student body. If that one, that's ASB, which is totally different. Yeah, that's that's used state bodies. I don't know where we're getting the 20,000 for student services. We spend a majority of our money on student services. So.
Thank you. We did have just a couple of other questions. Bill Woods in Freeland, are there funds available for refurbishing and keeping up the girls softball field at South of the High School?
The answer was, there's money available on capital projects for the projects that are determined to be done that year. So I I would suggest that this person talked to JJ about the needs of the facilities. Because I have no idea what the needs are to refurbish softball. I don't, you know, that would be a maintenance decision with JJ.
You've got two questions about transportation. Any electric buses planned from Donald Miller in Clinton?
Not this time. Electric buses run about $450,000 where the diesel buses run about 160,000. There's a substantial difference in cost. And the district would have to have that amount of money upfront to buy a bus. So and we don't have that much in the transportation vehicle fund.
And approximately how many years of school buses in service from Margaret King Clinton?
How many years of school buses?
How many years are school buses in service before they're retired?
No. I would think that the average is probably about 20 years. So we get reimbursed over a 13-year span for them, but they traditionally go to they have usually around 250,000 miles on them per school bus. Because diesel engines, they last a long time, but it's about 20 years before we dispose of them. We get a new bus.
Thank you. I believe there's just one other. This is a comment from Charlene Davenport that's just providing information from the county comprehensive plan, the state of Washington Employment Agency indicates that Island County is getting older 65 plus and is a 10% higher percentage than any other county in the state. Thank you, Charlene, for passing that information along. Donald Miller, again, his fuel savings, maintenance savings and longer useful span, i.e. 500,000 miles taken into consideration for electric vehicles.
Yes, we have looked at at that cost. It's just the biggest thing for us. We don't have $450,000 to buy the bus because buses are reimbursed by the state. The district has to be able to pay for them upfront. So that's that's our biggest drawback is it's just the funding to actually go and buy one.
I believe that those are the budget-based questions from the community that are here so far. So thank you very much.
Great. So we'll go ahead and do the the forecast base. I want to be real clear that, you know, I want to be real clear that, you know, this is. Useful information, but it's not always accurate information. There's no way that I can project out four years from now what our student enrollment is. Because if we look at our funding, it's based on student enrollment and there's no way of knowing what's going to happen in the next four years. I also don't know what's going to happen at the legislative level. Are they going to change the funding model? All those type things. So I'll go through the process and then as they do it, I'll make some assumptions. There is one clear picture that we can get from this and I'll, I'll talk about that. So if we look at enrollment projections, you have the current thousand eighty-eight, looking at the fact that we have ninth, tenth. Grades that are over a hundred and we have elementaries that are in the seventies, eighties. Looks like something, unless something changes, we'll continue to see. A reduction in there. I did. Think that a year from now that we'll see our kindergarten numbers rise again and. I based that on a couple concepts. The first is that we looked at our actual enrollment. Prior to this year, we saw. A slight increase in elementary education students coming in at the lower level. And the other part of that is, you know, part of this, I think, is a pandemic. I think we have kids that stayed home who will come back to school. Which will cause those numbers to rise a little bit. I'm also reading in the paper that the hospitals believe that they may be out of capacity. That there are going to be students that we will see five years from now that are being born. So that's the hope is that, you know, those numbers rise a little bit. But even if we get to seventy, eighty kids in kindergarten, we're still losing those classes that had a hundred and six, hundred and twenty-five, hundred and five when they were in high school. So we will continue to get smaller and that's the expectation unless something else changes. You know, the one thing is the ALE program. We have a lot of interest in that this year. There's, you know. Currently fifty-nine kids sign up. Is that a program that grows? Possibly, hopefully. For budget purposes, I can't count on that though. So it's a maintained budget level. The revenue forecast, and this is where we start getting into. Reducing things. First off, we're not going to have two million dollars in federal funding. That's a one-time only thing. So that's going to reduce by two million dollars our revenue. Also, as we get smaller, our levy goes down a little bit. Because it's based on number of students and then our state purpose funding based on student enrollment and the protocol school model also decreases over time. So you can see that, you know, big drop in twenty-two, twenty-three, most of that being. Those federal dollars going away, but also some. Due enrollment, but going from about twenty-one point five million to eighteen point five million. And then we start looking at expenditures. We're currently at twenty-two point three million. Two million of that is federal funds. So we're going to have to, you know. Make those adjustments. Oh, we're probably looking at a seven to nine percent reduction in our expenditures over time in order to maintain that six percent fund balance and we get to twenty-four, twenty-five. And if we don't do it in twenty-two, twenty-three, larger, it becomes harder as we move down the road. So we will be in the coming years. Looking at doing some reductions in, in our budgets. So basically on those projections, you know, I expect to end the current year with a fifteen percent bun, bun balance, then I would drop to ten point five, seven point two. And end up in that six percent range as we get through that, that fourth year projection. Possible capital projects. Basically, we're going to collect about two point two five million. We're going to spend about two point two five million. That's what our revenue have corresponds to our expenditures. Debt service, we've showed you before that we have basically three years left on that program and then it will be done. No longer need a debt service fund. A S B, looking at a, a projection about the same, about a hundred and fifty-nine, hundred and sixty thousand dollar revenue, about a hundred and fifty thousand. And expenditures, kind of a balanced account over time. And then transportation vehicle fund, looking to collect about a hundred thousand dollars for reimbursement and then being able to spend. Probably a hundred and sixty-five thousand, you know, two years from next year and then have to wait another year until we get some money and not go back to the DC or the electric bus. That's one of the, the big thing is like right now, if we're looking at twenty-one, twenty-two, if we're in twenty-five thousand dollars in expenditures. We're going to have about fifteen hundred dollars left. And then as we collect those hundred, hundred thousand per year, we'd have to go four or five years before we bought anything. And that's going to really ruin our depreciation schedule and, and getting money on a regular basis. So that's one of those main reasons when we look at those things. For anybody that wants more information, you can go to our website. If you go to Southwest School District, under departments, business services budget. You will find lots of documentation and it's the F two oh three. This is our revenue projection and what this looks like. If you look at this. And you can click on our thing is it gives you forty pages of how do they come up with those dollar amounts based on the enrollment numbers? This is what they're calculating. So it gives you the, the background behind how that funding formula actually works. There's a preliminary. Preliminary budget and it won't be the final budget to you approve it on the twenty-eighth. But again, you can go and look at it. It's two hundred and seventeen pages, so it has a lot more detail. I tried to summarize, but it has the same type of things, you know, comparisons. It also gets into. Programs and will give you all the breakdown by program. If you're interested in special education, whatever, it'll do that. And then finally, the last one is a four-year forecast. And again, it's another one of these fourteen-page OSBI reports that has. You know, detailed information and which I had summarized for you tonight. Any final questions I could answer for you?
We have a couple of comments from the community, but I'd like to first open it up for any board members who have questions or comments they'd like to make.
I just.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thanks for the comprehensive walkthrough. There, you don't hear me. Better? Can you hear me? Great. I stepped out of the room where we were sharing space because I was having a hard time hearing my fellow board members. Dan, I just wanted to thank you for the comprehensive walkthrough. It really helps me understand what we're deciding on when we do vote on the budget. So I just wanted to express my gratitude.
You're welcome. You know, I, I appreciate that you, as a board member, are interested enough to spend the time. Because I do understand that it's a lot of information to go through. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I want to echo Marnie and. You know me, I'm a numbers nerd and seeing it laid out this way makes it very easy to understand. I, I do have some comments and questions from the community. A reminder that I do need names and locations before I'm going to read a comment. I do have a comment here from Gwendy Hastings in Freeland. If that was true about our numbers Andrea, then the private school numbers would not be going up. Eileen Jackson, who gave us her location earlier, I believe it's Langley, but I'm not sure. We've got it earlier though. The cost of housing on would be is a deterrent from younger people to live on that would be. I absolutely agree that. The cost of, well, yeah, the, the cost of affordable housing is. Or the lack of affordable housing is definitely a contributing factor to the changing demographics of our community. Nathan Wilkie, I don't have a location. Hopefully Nathan, you'll toss one up here, but I'll read the comment while you're doing that. What happens to the funds not spent for sports and travel because of virus last year?
So anything not spent in that category, those are all funds that are paid for by the district. So they go into the, into the fund balance to be used in the following year.
And, and Nathan is from Clinton. Thank you, Nathan. That is all of the community questions and comments that we have on. The budget. Thank you, Mr. Pullman, for, as always, for putting that together and for answering the questions. Thank you to the attendees for joining in and asking your questions. We, we appreciate. The additional thoughts and queries and clarifications that that allows us to give. Where. I mean, the board doesn't do this for a living. Mr. Pullman and Dr. Moshe do, and they do it excellently, but. We, we need that, all the help we can get from the community to make sure that we don't miss anything. And so we very much appreciate your questions and comments. Looks like that's what we have for the budget. So we'll move on to the second point in our. Agenda for this workshop, which is the policy discussion and the presentation from Dr. Moshe on the notification of threats procedure. Dr. Moshe.
Okay. So. The board wanted an update on. How we deal with threats, what the procedures are around the policy that the board has in place. So I put together an update. For tonight. Essentially, the board's policy on school-based threats. Pulling that up just to give context. Says that the, the board, of course, is committed to providing a safe and secure environment, that we do threat assessments. As a district, this is policy. Thirty-two, twenty-five, and folks can get it online on the board's website. So you can see it very directly. The procedures come from the superintendent establishing them based on the board's direction to do so. So I'm ta- going to take you directly. To that, if I can. Sorry, I'm on one screen tonight. So do you see my board policy backup? Okay. So the procedure that we've put together is based on. This model that has come out of the Salem Kaiser School District in Oregon and is used across the country, really. They put it together several years ago now. We have provided training to all of our staff. Including teachers and classified staff, basically on how to assess a threat and what to do. And much more in-depth with our administrative staff, based again on this model. And we have a plan in place that folks can find directly on our website. It's the Student Threat Assessment and Management System. I'm going to go directly to it, but if you go on our website and even just use our search function. And look for student threat assessment, you will find it. So I'm going to go directly to it. And walk us through what we do. So the first thing is we have an incident that we find out about. And sometimes that's not always easy because the threat may not be within the school district. It may be from outside of school or on social media or so on. But once we find out about an incident or it's reported to us, we determine first and foremost if there's imminent danger. And if there is imminent danger, then we notify law enforcement and at the same time engage in a level one threat assessment. So when we do that level one threat assessment, it's a team of people who have been trained to do it in our school district. And each building has a, a threat assessment team. And again, there are a series of questions that we will ask regarding whether or not this is imminent. Whether or not there is a motive, a plan, an attempt, a weapon. Is the student in the custody of someone? At school or with their parent. So the first phone call is to the parent to say we received a threat and. You know, it's regarding your student and where is your student? Where is your child? So we do these things immediately. To determine if there is an imminent threat and then what we need to do about it. And again, there's a series of questions that we walk through to determine that need and what to do about it. This is a guide that we follow and I'm not going to go through it detail by detail, page by page. But essentially, it is all of the training that we have received. Put down on paper with a step-by-step guide, much like any of our safety guides when we have. Fire, when we have earthquake, when we have any imminent danger, we have a process in place. That allows us to look to a written document so that people are not having to develop a plan on the fly. If a student is determined to not be an imminent threat, then there is a different process. If there is an imminent threat. Not only are we notifying law enforcement, we're going to a level two investigation, which involves more team members. Including law enforcement specialists and maybe county caseworker or maybe mental health. Or we've taken the student by ambulance to the hospital. It depends on what that threat. May be. If it is a, a threat that. Folks need to know about. We will do a general notification, but based on this process, and you can see it up here, it's on a need-to-know basis. So for example, if the student is in a high school, is in high school and has four different teachers. It may not be that we notify the entire staff. It may be that we notify that student's teacher, only their teachers depending on. What the threat is and what we've determined. Or, or it may be that we notify the high school staff, or it may be that we notify the entire district and parents. So again, each is a case by case need to know basis. The rest of this document are if we're sending out a notice to parents, we have a, a draft of a, a sample of that. We have directions on what we ask and don't ask of students, of what we ask and don't ask of potential witnesses and so on. So. The bottom line is we have a plan that we follow whenever we. Have an issue that requires a threat assessment. I'm happy to answer questions from the board or walk through anything in particular. I believe that our policy. And our procedure. Are not only are they compliant, but they're compliant with one another. The board's policy is outlined and I believe this procedure meets the policy intention. There's something in addition you would like me to go through that would be helpful?
Joe, could you just clarify? Because I think that some, sometimes a lot of things specifically related around discipline. Fall under privacy guidelines because of the students and because of their minor status. So could you just? Maybe give some context about what the district is able to share about threat assessment, threat assessments that may or may not have occurred. Or what, what they can't share.
So all student information is private. Whether we notify families that a student happened, engaged in some kind of behavior that. Was threatening, the student's information is not revealed. Typically, we don't reveal any information that would. Allow someone to identify who that student may be. Regardless of the. The situation. So again, we don't disclose any student information. It's. Once again, a need-to-know basis. If there was a threat made that has no impact on the general population. Or for example, this threat is made and the student is in custody or has been provided to law enforcement, if, if that were the case. The threat has been essentially eradicated. So that's why people may or may not find out. The difficulty is that often people share information that on social media and they may or may not know what the facts are. And we can't reveal those facts. We can't say, yes, it happened or no, it didn't. Because that's student privacy. We can't say, yes, it happened or no, it didn't, because that's student privacy. And that's frustrating. It's frustrating for us and for folks who want to know more information. Does that help what you're?
I do have another question, if you could mute real quick since we were in the same room. Thank you. I just wondered if you could give into go into a little more detail on how the determination of imminent threat is is determined. I know that you mentioned it briefly, just if there's any more detail you can go into there, both for myself and for those listening along at home. Thank you.
So for example, if we learn that a student has made a threatening remark of some sort regarding another student, for example. If we know by calling the parent that that student is in parent custody, the parent is aware, the parent of the student who may have been threatened is aware that student is in custody and they're both in separate places, that would not be an imminent threat. If we have a student who wrote an inappropriate message on the bathroom wall, and we have that student in our custody and care in the school office, and we're going to be following up with parents and potentially law enforcement, it's not, it's no longer an imminent. So we determine that on a case-by-case basis. The most important thing is do we have the student in custody or the parent have the student in custody? If there was a mention, for example, of a weapon, is the weapon, is there a weapon? Is the weapon in custody? So again, these are things that the questions that we ask. So and I'll go back to something that that had become sort of epidemic several years ago, but but there are different ways that that, for example, if one makes a bomb threat. I don't even like saying the words out loud, but one makes a bomb threat. There are different ways to handle those things. It used to be that schools were evacuated, and then it became epidemic because it became a game for students. They would want to see the school empty. And so schools stopped doing that and created a threat assessment to determine if they could, you know, if there was in fact something that was threatening. We take every threat seriously. Our reaction to it is very careful. But the misunderstanding, I think, is that every time we hear any threat, our immediate first call is law enforcement. It isn't. Our first thing to do is to determine if that threat is imminent and what we're going to do about it. So again, if we have the student right in front of us, it changes the imminence. It doesn't mean we don't call different folks into the meeting regarding the issue. Could be mental health, could be law enforcement, could be suicide prevention. It depends, and that's what the training's all about. And it's several hours of training over time that that folks have received in order to be able to do this effectively.
Is there anything else from the board before I read some community comments?
I think just reiterating that we can only respond to the situations that we know of and those that are directly related to school and operations of the school. And while we recognize schools are oftentimes a center of the community and a lot of what is happening in the community is reflected in our schools, that's not always a clear distinction. And that's something that district leadership have to really navigate carefully. And so just being aware that we we recognize that, especially with social media and the internet and technology, that those lines are becoming more and more blurred. But there still has to be some consideration for what is impacting school, what is not, what is impacting students within our schools but occurring in the community. And we need the community's support in helping all of our students, and we need to address those issues as a whole and as a collective collaborative group. But it's not always the school's place to lead.
Thank you. That's incredibly important thing to remember, and I appreciate having your expertise on this to share that. Okay, we have several comments in a series from Kathleen Warren and Clinton in regards to any recent incidents or any incidents involving our students. I'm not going to read the student's name in any of these comments because I want to be sensitive of privacy concerns and that sort of thing. I will still read the comments. I'm just going to edit the them when I read them. The district did not follow policy in the case of Isaiah of the student's threat on social media. The procedures were not followed. The district never reported the incident to law enforcement. Per the student, the threat was classified as a level-one. Yeah, and I will not be posting that comment either because it does have the name in it. So we are going to address the comment without the student's name, and then I'm going to dismiss those comments so that they do not appear, so the name does not appear in the record. But I do still want to address that statement. And Dr. Moshe, if you'd like to take the lead on that while I shift these comments around.
We certainly did follow our policy. We knew immediately where the student was, the level of threat, and it was not an imminent threat. And we followed through on doing a level-one threat assessment. So we did follow policy.
Thank you. Next comment is from Beverly Rose in Freeland. What if the threat isn't from a student, but is directed to a student?
Again, the school district can control what's within its control. If an adult in the community, if that's what this is referring to, threatens a student, then the individual who is threatened would need to call police if they're threatened.
And if they're physically on school grounds, when we hear about this, we would absolutely locate them.
We would locate them. We would work with them to call a parent, and it would be again up to the parent to determine if they were going to involve law enforcement for their child who had been threatened.
Gwendy Hastings Freeland, in the second paragraph, just a moment, of the school policy, it says it's not based on a student's characteristics. When questioned about the lack of response on a recent threat, it was said that the staff knew this student in particular and that they knew that it was not a real risks based on what they knew about the student. Any threat should be taken seriously, no matter what staff think about the student or their usual behavior. It's been said many times after a shooting at a school that people never thought they were capable of doing that.
If the threat that Gwendy is referring to is the one I think it is, it wasn't about characteristics of the student. It was regarding the student being in custody. We knew where the student was and the situation had nothing to do with the characteristics of the student. We do take every threat seriously, and we follow through.
I've got a couple of comments here without names that I'm not reading because we would need them. We need the names and locations. I, Robert Kenny, in Clinton, an adult community member, wish to applaud the district for developing this sensible plan. Gives a great sense of safety to our students and staff, especially in this time when threats and intimidation from a small segment of our society are replete. Thank you for that. I will note that we did not develop this plan. We have implemented it, but adapted it to our needs. But the credit for this has to go to the professionals on this sort of thing. Margaret King, Clinton. What about students who make general threats on social media? So it's sent to multiple people in the community in the school. How is that handled?
So I will answer that we do not monitor social media. When things are brought to our attention that impact school, we will follow through on them, but we cannot. We don't monitor social media. So if we find out about a threat and it impacts students in school, we will do our best to follow up.
Eileen Jackson, since there are already students who have been threatened, is the threatening student's parent, if the threatening student's parents blow it off, how do you protect the student? I believe that Dr. Moshe mentioned that part of that is if it's a specific threat, we also get in contact with the threatened person. Anything more to add on that, or does that cover it? Let's see here. Donald Miller, Clinton, death threat via social media, is that handled in your example of a threat on a bathroom wall? Dr. Moshe answered about death threats on social media. Jackson Murphy, Clinton, thank you for clearly outlining your threat assessment plan. I appreciate your clarification for the wider community. Just reading through here to make sure that we have specific. Eileen Jackson, how can you make the students feel safe enough to tell you if they have been threatened? That a large part of that's going to be culture.
I also will say that's a great question. We have an anonymous reporting opportunity. It's listed on our website. It's on the walls in the school so that we can also receive anonymous notice that we can follow up on. So if if someone is feeling harassed or threatened, they can hopefully go to a trusted adult. But if if they don't feel comfortable doing that, they can put in an anonymous report.
Sarah McDougal, Freeland, thank you to school board members for your service. I appreciate Southbury School District's careful handling of threats. Yeah. I, Robert Kenny, an adult community member, am unsure whether a student receiving external threats can trust where our sheriff's loyalties and priorities lay. So we need to direct students to other law enforcement agencies on state and federal levels. Whether what the student's parents are comfortable, who the student's parents are comfortable reporting to is up to the student's parents. Yeah. Kathleen Warren, Clinton, know the district did not follow policy. Policy requires the district to contact law enforcement, not the other way around, which is what happened in the case of one student. Earlier, a concerned citizen reported the incident. The school staff once notified of the incident by law enforcement, did not immediately respond to law enforcement.
I will repeat that the threat was not imminent. It doesn't require a policy that we call law enforcement. Our assistant principal, who was investigating the situation that this is referring to, was going to call law enforcement as a follow-up. It's certainly up to individual citizens if they learn of something on social media and call law enforcement. We encourage them to do that. But we were following our policy and procedure and handled it as we were supposed to.
We've got two more here. This is Pamela Loop of Green Bank and president of the Board of Whidbey Island Nurishes. I appreciate that the school board is reviewing this policy. I wonder about threats to students from outside individuals. Specifically, our excellent United Student Leadership Committee members have recently spoken out in regard to high school curriculum. I appreciate Dr. Moshe's comment on procedures for threats to students from outside adult individuals. Yeah, I think that those comments that that's how we can do it, we can refer to their parents. Yep. Let's hear, Eileen Jackson, if they're harassed, can you protect them in school?
We work to protect all of our students. And if they're, if they let us know that they're being harassed, we will work with them to follow up on that and stop the harassment. Again, I'm concerned that folks are indicating here that students are being harassed by adults from outside of the district. And I encourage people, if that's happening, that they need to follow up with law enforcement.
I'm going to read this comment. I don't know that we have a response to it, but I'm going to read it anyhow because it is related. Stephen Schwartz Langley, what is your sense of the support you receive from city police and from the sheriff? Is there a difference?
So when we have situations, we call the county sheriff and state police. The city of Langley doesn't cover our school buildings, though they could be potentially involved in terms of mutual aid. I have to say that whenever we've called law enforcement, we've received their support immediately. So I can't say anything about whether it's different, but I know that they respond to us when we call them.
Kimberly Taxney, maybe perhaps in today's day and age, we can change policy to contact police enforcement in future cases. We certainly can look into that for lesser threats. I would be curious to know, at least for for me personally, I'd be curious to know the frequency of such things to know if how much, how much we would be sharing about situations that already are under control. But it's certainly something that we can consider if the board wishes to do that.
Brooke, I would, I would caution on that piece that part of what we are doing within the equity work is we are working to address areas that we know create systemic barriers. And one of those pieces is directly related around discipline and how we respond to discipline situations. And over involving law enforcement can be an area of bias. And so I think the benefit about the Salem Kaiser threat assessment is that it is a research-based threat assessment that has been adopted by multiple school districts across the country. And they did that with the intention of eliminating some of those biases. And so I, I think that I would push back and say, I think we need to trust the system that we have adopted and the training that we receive and recognize that it does not come just with South would be implementing, but it comes with a network of support and a network of people who work in mental health and who understand the needs of students with these these situations and that they are actively working to reduce the involvement of law enforcement when it is not necessary. They are absolutely for involving law enforcement when it is necessary, but I would caution us against that.
I absolutely agree with that. I'd also add that if it's a significant number of cases, it would be a burden on law enforcement when things have already been, when there isn't an issue. Eileen Jackson, please understand that I have the utmost respect for what you're doing in all cases. However, it feels like following policy doesn't protect the students while they are at school. I would be curious to know how that's believed. But because I am certainly concerned, as I know the rest of the leadership team is with protecting students while they're at school. Closing, having closed campuses and that sort of thing is one part of that, I know, or limiting access to campuses. We certainly want to reassure both students and parents that we're doing everything that we can because we want to be doing everything that we can to protect students while they're at school.
I could just jump in here. A lot of what we do and have done over the past several years is to work on changing our school culture so that we are reducing the the likelihood of the harassment. And that has come about not only because it's the right thing to do, but we've been working with our students who have come to us to say we want to. And so our meetings with ASB, Associated Student Body Leaders, our meetings with the United Student Leaders, who brought these kinds of things forward, our school board, student members who have said it directly to the school board that they want to change culture. And so I believe we're moving in that direction. And I would also say that we're putting resources toward that. We've implemented a social emotional curriculum, K-12. We've been working with students, for example, at the high school through advisory. So there are a lot of efforts underway to reduce it. So we do take it seriously, and we want our students to feel safe. So again, I, I think all of the efforts are important. And it's important for folks to know that it's not acceptable for one student to harass another, nor is it acceptable for an adult to harass a student. And if we know about it, we will work on it. for one student to harass another, nor is it acceptable for an adult to harass a student. And if we know about it, we will work on it. Many of the issues that that we deal with are so and so told so and so who said they saw it on Facebook. And those are the kinds of things that we want to follow up. We want to help. But if if it's outside of school, it's very difficult for us to follow up. So it's it's part of our community fabric as well. And if one looks at comments made on Facebook, adult to adult, you can see that they're not always kind. So our students deal with that as well.
I'm looking at a couple of comments here that would give away a dignity of a student again, and I'm going to creatively edit them a little. Kathleen Warren Clinton, please let me know if I don't get to the heart of this and help me find another way. Or I would also suggest that if you have continued concerns about this incident, that you can contact the board and Dr. Moshe directly, and we can have a more in-depth sit down conversation. So I'm going to try to get to get to this without identifying the student. Is it appropriate to reward students who threaten other students by giving them a larger platform for their words? And I would say, and I would love to hear Dr. Moshe's statement on this also, that I would not consider actions following incidents as rewards. Yeah. Yeah, I'm trying very hard to speak in the in this public on the record setting, speak very carefully around the students identity. So I would I would suggest if you wouldn't mind reaching out to the board or to Dr. Moshe directly via email, and we can sit down and talk about this in a way that doesn't put student identity in a public meeting in such a manner.
I would just repeat that we followed our policy. We handled it correctly and threats are dealt with and students are protected. And we have an individual who is commenting and they don't agree with that. And that's they're entitled to their opinion.
Okay, I have a couple more. They are continuing to flow in. This is certainly a a topic that the community and the board and the leadership team as a whole feel very strongly about and have. We all want to make sure that our students are as safe as humanly possible. So I think it's great that we can sit down and and discuss these in a workshop setting. Yeah. So Katrina Morse Freeland, thank you to the South will be school district and board for your focus on equity. How does the school district handle hate speech such as racial slurs and homophobic slurs? Are there special practices in place to protect traditionally marginalized communities within the student body?
We actually have been working in our high school in particular, but all school levels on using restorative practices to work on changing our culture and to again, educate our students as to the impact of those comments and slurs and to make it very clear that they're unacceptable. So yes, and to the point of I know you're going to get to another comment about how do we track that? And do we know that it's making a difference? And we do. Because we see a reduction in discipline. We see an improvement generally in culture. We see a reduction in students reporting incidences. So we believe we're going in the right direction. It's going to take all of us working together to change culture. But we believe that we've made a very strong start.
I have a comment here from Sharon Abreu, who does not have a location. So Sharon, if you could please put that location in the Q and A, I will read the comment once I have that. The names that I'm reading that don't have locations immediately following them are those who have already commented. So we already have their location on the record. Eileen Jackson, thanks for all you do and for your courage in taking on these issues in these difficult times. Nathan Wilkie, if you have a Clinton, if you have an internal problem that you fix in house, I would still notify authorities because of social media and external things that may still be going on. Let's see here. Sarah McDougall Freeland, education around equity and inclusion is critically important for creating a safe environment. Southbury School District is doing an excellent job. Stino Enzek Clinton, Andrea, can you please clarify what you mean about being careful about contacting law enforcement? Careful to not reinforce biases?
Sure, absolutely. So what we understand systemically is that our students who are not part of the dominant culture, which for us would be white, middle class heterosexual culture, Christian culture, they tend to, we have implicit biases that we are unaware of. And it influences how we make decisions or how we make calls. So kind of the, one of the best examples that I think I've ever heard of, it actually came from somebody who does a lot of equity trainings in the region. Her name is Heidi Schillinger. She's phenomenal. She runs a blog called Fakeody. And if you have interest in it, I would highly recommend checking it out. She shares a story about how she was boarding a plane. And stereotypically pilots are typically thought of it to be male. And so she's on the plane and the pilot comes out over the intercom and it's a female pilot. And she has this epiphany of like, yes, female pilot. This is wonderful. They're up in the air and they hit some turbulence and she starts wondering like, I hope this pilot can can fly the plane. I hope this pilot can make it get us to the ground, right? And for her personally, she recognized that that was a thought that she did not typically have during other times when she experienced turbulence. And so she looked at that situation and said, man, that was an incident incidence of implicit bias for me. Where she recognized that she had a thought about a female pilot that she would not have had about a male pilot. And for all of us, it's unique and different. That was her example and her own experience. And so I trust her in in identifying that and recognizing that. But statistically, our students of color are typically reprimanded in classroom situations at higher proportions than white students, boys are reprimanded at higher proportions than male students. And essentially, people that don't come from backgrounds that we personally would identify as familiar tend to stand out to us, which means therefore their behavior stands out to us. And that can also lead into the level of threat that they present. So a student can make a comment, and if it comes from a female student, we weigh it with a certain amount of weight. And if it comes with from a male student, we may weigh it with more or less. And that has been pretty consistently shown to occur both within school systems and also within law enforcement. And so when we think about whether or not we are calling law enforcement, we want to have systems and structures in place to check our ladder of inference and to ensure that we're not engaging in unintentional bias. And that is why research based programs like the Salem Kaiser Threat Assessment are so helpful because they are designed to check that bias. And so we don't have to worry about, are we engaging in this, right? Are we treating this differently for one student than the other? It's designed to level and equalize so that we can truly understand what is the level of threat in a way that doesn't account for human error. And so a lot of the comments that I'm hearing about like, well, how do we? How do we know? Like, how do we know? How do we make sure? Right? This is probably one of the best steps that we can take to be sure. And really, the Salem Kaiser focus is is on getting help and getting resources out to the person. It's not about punishment and it's not about ostracizing. It's about looking at what do you need to be safe and what do you need so that others are safe? And that can look in a lot of different ways. If this, if a situation were to escalate to a level two, what occurs is there's a meeting where other professionals are brought in. So you look at, is there somebody who represents this student at the table? So if they are if they are tribal, right? Is there a tribal member at the table to speak to the cultural considerations of this student? If they have a therapist that they already see, that person is invited to the table. If it's a situation where, you know, a comment spoke to home environments where there might be concerns about whether or not the parents have the tools needed CPS or other agencies might be invited to the table. And the conversation is really grounded and centered on how do we help? And how do we prevent incidents from occurring? But also, how do we help support so that we are not just, you know, stopping one incident, but we're stopping the trajectory? And let me know if that didn't answer the question.
Thank you, Andrea. Sharon Abreu, I have to apologize to you. You did in a comment a few further down, you did note that you live on Orcas Island and have been working with USL for over a year. So thank you for that. That is my mistake. The comment is, it seems to me that there is a wider problem here and in many other communities as well. I'm curious what resources might be available for dealing with anger issues and for acquiring skills related to quality of discourse. I know that we do a lot of social emotional learning. I don't know, Dr. Moshe, if you want to speak to that a little bit.
Well, we could always use more resources. We have counselors in place. We do have a curriculum around social emotional learning. We also have instituted an advisory at the high school in particular. And they're going to focus more on those kinds of efforts to help students work together. So anger is a piece of it. We also have a counselor from the county that is a mental health counselor. So we have some resources in place, but certainly if folks have an idea or get greater resources to work with our students, we'd be happy to hear about them.
Michael McFarland Freeland, in the event that was previously being discussed regarding the threat that would make national news, was there any form of corrective action administered? I can tell you right now that we do not discuss disciplinary matters for staff or students in public.
Brooke, there's also a question regarding asking for data around the student discipline, and I can pull that up if somebody wants to give me screen share when it's an appropriate time.
Thank you. If someone wants to gather that together, once we get there, we'll do that. I'm Robert Kenny in Clinton. Wonderful to see your emphasis is on school culture and SEO. That's critically important, and at least my opinion. Eileen Jackson, thanks, Joe. Yes, I knew you were doing those things. I just wanted you to say it. It's sometimes we forget that not everyone knows what we what what's going on in the school district. So it's wonderful to have those prompts to allow us to talk about what we're already doing. Kathleen Warren Clinton, these resources are being used to change the culture in a discriminatory manner. All students should be treated equally. I'm also going to note down here further from, thank you, Brooke. I would love to have a sit down meeting with you. Please send an email in to myself and Dr. Moshe and we'll we'll arrange something to sit down. I will note that anyone who has two kids or friends with two kids or a brother or a sister knows that every student, every child needs something a little bit different than their fellow children. So treating kids in an objectively equal manner is not always the best response to what those students need. And there's a dozen metaphors to explain it. I'm not going to go into that, but I just want to note that sometimes that we want equally good results for all of our students, but sometimes that takes that requires an individual attention to each student. An individual approach. Preston Osman Freeland, is there any sense as to whether the public reaction to this recent threat is itself harassment? Not only of the student, but of the school board. Furthermore, the doxing of the student brings up questions about student privacy, which has previously been a problem in Southbury School District, recent memory and is clearly a tactic to fuel public uproar towards both students and faculty. I I don't feel like I have the necessary information to respond to the question in there about whether or not any reactions are harassment. There are certainly free speech issues also involved. Donald Miller, thank you for that work to in culture change and new curriculum and utilizing student input. Do you have data to track to assess that change in culture? That's all you, Andrea.
Okay, so where I'm going to is OSPIs. It's their report card. So oftentimes people will go here to look at student achievement data, but it actually really drills really far down. So basically, quick summary, you can look through any district, you can drill down to a school level. But where you want to go is you want to go to diversity report. And then you want to scroll down and you can look at all kinds of different measures. But for this, I'm looking at student discipline and I'll start by discipline rate by student demographic. So this is for the 1920 school year because with COVID, we don't have that information up to date, but you will see female students, 1.4%. Or about 76,000 students across the state were suspended. And this would include short term suspension, long term suspension, emergency expulsion or expulsion. Males were 3.3%. Students who didn't identify as either male or female, 3.5%. Native American students, 5.3% compared to Asian students, which were less than 1%. African American or black students, 5%, Hispanic, 2.9%, Native Hawaiian, 3.9. Two or more races, 3% compared to 2% of white peers. Another area that's really interesting to look at would be based by student program. So this would be whether or not they qualify under special education. So English language learners, not too much difference. Foster care is pretty significant across the state. This was also echoed in the isolation and restraint data from a state level. Students in foster care disproportionately impacted by discipline systems and exclusionary practices, highly capable students who are experiencing homelessness, so significantly more likely to be suspended. Students who are low income. Migrant students. Military families. Section 504. And these would be students who qualify for special education students. If you look at the number of dates, days by student demographics, so this would be that bias. So for example, if I have two students, maybe I give one student one day or less. Or maybe I give another student six to 10 days. And so if we look at the distribution of what is the commonalities across how many days students receive, you will notice just some some changes in in how it's spread. And I am not enough of an expert to understand, you know, whether or not this is typical or not. But I noticed, for example, that our white students, 9% of those would fall under 10 or more days where our native students, 11.6% of those students would receive 10 or more days. And if you look at multiple factors, so student program and characteristic. So if we look at our EL students compared to non EL students, so EL students may not necessarily be disciplined at a higher rate, but when they are, they are receiving more 10 or more days than if they were not looking at your home, your students experiencing homelessness. Students with disabilities, part of why this is pretty consistent would be they are protected under IDEA and there are limitations on what can and cannot be suspended. There are also steps in process if they go over 10 days. There are also steps in process if they go over 10 days. So you'll notice that there is a discrepancy amongst students with disabilities versus students without disabilities up to that 10 day mark, and that is what would cue a manifestation determination. So I think there's just, there's a lot of different information that's up on this site. I think it's, it's a really great tool that people can use. But we do know that those discipline data, that those discipline data rates have been pretty consistent. And you can also look years back. And that is why the discipline policy changed is because of that discrepancy and the implicit bias present.
Thank you. Seeing those numbers laid out for a numbers nerd like me is huge. And there's clear differences there to be seen. I'm going to have to dig into those a little bit closer. And I know that part of what we're doing with Dr. Campbell coming up is looking at that data for our own school and seeing how we can change how we interact with our students to make sure that we are being equitable in our.
Yeah. And I know there's questions about like what infractions would cause what levels of suspension? And that is pretty much outlined by individual district policy and procedure. So if you look at, there's certain like zero tolerance ones. So if you have a weapon on campus, that's an automatic emergency expulsion. And it automatically goes to a threat assessment. So there are kind of guide rails about what goes where. What we know about looking at that information and like when you're in, when you're doing this work, you, we have the Skyward system, which most parents interact with to check their students' grades. That's also where discipline infractions are caused. And so when you enter in a discipline infraction, you're also labeling the incident and what, um, what the, the days were, right? So I would say, um, you know, threat to student safety, uh, six days, right? Or whatever I, I do, right? If I code it as an emergency expulsion, I'm coding it that way. And I'm also providing a descriptor. That is what OSPI has been bringing in. They collect it right around discipline reports, I believe, are February. They pull all of the previous year data and then they, they develop this information from that. So this is not just like, hey, they had this many days. They're also taking into account the descriptors and where the discrepancies are between the incidences. So they're looking at huge metacognitive trends about this infraction is getting this response from this subset and this response from this subset.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, um, back to these. I'm going to mispronounce this name. I know this ahead of time. I apologize. I'll do my best. I Suzanne Fail of Clinton, a concerned citizen, support the changes that Southbury School District has made in response to student and community voices. Maggie Natress Langley, thank you to the board for working to update these policies and take steps to improve student safety. Preston Osman, so grateful to the school board and for the introduction of restorative justice practices that is extremely heartening to hear. Bill Leeds. Sorry, I'm skipping over things that are not related to the agenda item again. Because that's what we're here to discuss is we're here to discuss the items on the agenda. And right now we're looking at the notification of threats policy. Kathleen Warren Clinton, Andrea just admitted she is treating students differently by claiming Christian middle class heterosexual people are different from other people.
Just to clarify, I'm identifying that as the dominant culture of what most people would identify with in our community. And that may be changing, that may be, but are the majority of our society functions from that perspective.
Yeah, the, the most common identity. Yeah. Margaret King, can you show us where the bias is removed from the system? Systems are run by humans who, according to you, all have biases. I, I, I don't know exactly how to respond to that. My expertise is not there. I would, yeah, I, I'd say that systems are, if the system is well designed, it is more likely to, if the system is designed to remove bias, it is more likely to act without bias than a person working without a system.
So I think this is referring to the Salem Kaiser system. And that would be how it would be considered research based. So it has gone through extensive research, implementation, peer review, having people screening it for bias at a much larger level than a local school district. So this would be at a national level, it's been screened at this level for those things. Brooke, you're muted. I don't hear Brooke. Still muted. Brooke, you're not speaking.
Thank you. I'm going to start again on Gwendy's comment. I really hope that Jackson's came through. I, I read it. If, if it did not come through, it is in the answered questions. Jackson, if it didn't come through, uh, throw it up again and I will read it again. Gwendy Hastings Freeland, working in behavioral health, one of our first questions we ask when someone calls our facility is, do you feel safe? Sounds like there is a recurring theme in the comments that people, students do not feel safe due to the current cultural of the district or due to threats. I hope the board will take this seriously and show action after this meeting and reach out to the student body as a whole. If you hear many people raising a safety concern, you can't put the responsibility solely on the individual to report it or reach out. With that said, I encourage anyone who feels that they're being harassed or feeling unsafe to call the crisis line in law enforcement. If law enforcement is not a viable option for personal reasons. The crisis line is 1-800-584-3578. Thank you, Gwendy, for sharing that. And yes.
Brooke, I'm wondering if we also missed Irene's comment with you being on mute.
Yes, please, Irene, if I, I missed your, if my comment, if your comment didn't, wasn't audible, please let me know and I'll read it again. Joanne Rooms Coopville, I applaud Southbury School District for all efforts toward equity in policy and curriculum. Eileen Jackson, Andrea, how can anyone object to the equity program as you just explained it? Thank you for your extremely clear and thoughtful explanation of implicit bias.
Brooke, may I?
I have a comment here with just a first name. Joe Johnson, Anna Cordis, kudos to the board and the admin staff for having fantastic policies on threat in place. Recognizing differences in your community puts you ahead of the pack. Irene Vernon Langley, what has the district done to address the equity issues noted in the data? Just to note that is statewide data. So we're going to be looking at our own personal at our district's data with Dr. Campbell very shortly.
Yeah, that's part of what bringing Dr. Campbell in was regarding, um, both looking at achievement data around academic scores, but also looking at discipline.
Marnie, did you want to say something?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I just want, since I'm not in the, I didn't.
I will go back to both hers and Jackson's. Thank you. Scrolling all the way down through the 79 that we've marked as answered. Irene Vernon Langley, I'm impressed and thankful for your work on behalf of our students. Your work on equity is vital and your attention to threat is important in making schools safe and equitable to everyone. Shout out to Andrea for understanding systemic issues in education. And I believe that's where I noted that I don't know what we would do without her on the board. Jackson Murphy Clinton, thank you so much for being aware of implicit bias and its implications in situations of threat assessment and a broader range of topics. I'm appreciative of you, Andrea. Robert Kenny, who we have earlier, yes, there are always free speech issues, Mr. Wilford, but that's a false flag in this instance. When I arrived, I saw a man in a black outfit, wearing a flat jacket and other military gear, walking through the cars and receiving cheers from the protesters. That's not free speech. That's terrorism designed to squelch the free speech of others. Kathleen Warren Clinton, you do not provide the constant context or methodology for these percentages or the situations of these students. Even the numbers you share are not more than twice as much, which is what you stated. Michael McFarland Freeland, I don't believe the focus of the issue is targeting, but that there are concerns that the administration did not handle the issues fairly and gave preferential treatment. This is a concern with consistency and assurance of follow through regardless of status privilege or underprivileged. We, we always strive to handle issues fairly and equitably. And I, I, I would like to note the increase in positive responses we've received in that category on the ESS survey. So that's something I'm really proud of. Kelly writes in Freeland, that data does not reflect the infraction. So how can it be determined that there is bias in the discipline?
I, I would trust OSPI's data analysis. There is a question from Sierra up towards the top that is related to this, but it, it is sandwiched in between comments that are not. So I would encourage you to.
I, I was holding off on that because I did not have a name or location for Sierra.
Sierra did provide her name and location. It's following, it is one, two, three, four, five from the top.
One, two, three, four, five. Uh, thank you. Sierra Lindberg Langley. And now I will go back to the question here or the comment here. Crisis management of threat is important. What are you doing to stop the systemic threat of white supremacy and anti-science? I would say that we're putting our policy on our equity policy, policy 0001 front and center in our decisions. We're looking at how we approach our goals for the superintendent and how we shift our budget around.
Brooke, can I also read another one of her comments that I think is related to this? So it says, local community member, land and homeowner. I am a community member that is currently considering whether or not to raise children on this island. I am truly concerned about raising children here because of the presence of adults in the community who openly threaten and intimidate youth. What do you intend to do to ensure student safety? Can you ensure the school district will continue to support science-based curriculum?
We support science-based curriculum. We've implemented additional science courses and including our environmental science course. We're teaching accurate history. And if folks are being threatened or intimidated, I encourage them to come forward. We're doing everything we can inside the schoolhouse to help our students be safe, feel safe and supported and seen, all of our students seen and heard. That's the work we're doing. So.
Can I just add that I think we're very fortunate to have partnership at the Washington state level.
And I'd like to appreciate, I think Gwendy Heising said that there are resources out there. There are resources outside the school. There are resources inside the school. And so for me, thinking about not only policies and procedures, which is what we're talking about now, I'm thinking about all of the qualified professionals that are in a school building that can help kids out every day. You know, we are getting better and better, I think, and making sure every child has a trusted adult. Whether it's the school nurse, their bus driver, their principal, their teacher, their teaching assistant, the guidance counselor, somebody in that building is looking out for that kid. And there are programs that also work directly with school age kids too, within the building and offer them supports as well. So I do want to just recognize the hard work that those folks do and recognize for the public and the community that those, those supports are there. And they're there as part of this package of protection and equity in doing the best we can for each and every student, no matter who they are as a human being. But also looking and making sure that we're not being biased in how we offer supports. Making sure we are always learning and growing and hearing the voices of folks who have been historically ignored. And that includes kids who are, who maybe are experiencing homelessness or are experiencing, um, being in a community where there aren't too many people who are their color or experiencing gender the way they are or whatever it is. And so, um, just thank you to the community members out there who, who, who know those supports exist and keep talking about that because that's an important component of our schools being safe and our kids feeling safe in schools.
Thank you very much for that. And yes, yes. Barbara Shady, Shetty, Clinton, I appreciate the complexity of your work during this time, namely your attention to keeping students and staff safe while making the changes you have in response to student voices. Thank you for your commitment to equity and justice. Kathleen Warren Clinton, who is Dr. Kimball, that's Dr. Campbell, who we've brought, who we're bringing up into the district to talk with us, talk through our scores and discipline data and other other data to find where we are underserving students, no matter what, who they might be, where, where we're underserving them and how we can do better. Reminder that I, I will only read comments that have full names attached. Just a moment, Martin.
Hey, I just, I don't know if you can hear me now, board members. I just wanted to make a note for the community members watching from home. Most of the board is actually in one room right now and listening to one another live. And I'm sitting elsewhere because I was having a hard time hearing. So if it feels like I've been speaking and being ignored and talked over, it's because they literally can't hear me, even though those of you at home may be able to hear me. So I just wanted to express on behalf of my fellow board members that they're not ignoring me on purpose. And I'll use the raise hand function next time I need them to turn their speakers on.
Thank you, Marnie. Wait, you, you're on the school board? Okay. Sierra, who we got the full name and location from previously, really appreciate you all. Don't listen to anyone who isn't in the muck with you. Serious respect. Sarah McDougall Freeland, thank you for listening to students or having students on committees for addressing student concerns. Again, I, I'm trying to select these that are specific to the topic at hand. So if I miss one, that's likely what it is. If you think I've missed it in incorrectly, please let me know. Kathleen Warren Andrea states that the Christian culture is the dominant culture and therefore all other cultures should be judged against it. That comment itself is bias.
I think that's one perspective. I think the other, the way that I choose to look at it is I am a white, middle-class heterosexual Christian. And I can walk into pretty much any space in my community and I can feel represented. I can turn on TV and I see couples represented on TV that look like me. I can walk into spaces in work and I can see my gender and my ethnicity represented at the level that I am at. I can walk in to apply for a loan and I don't feel like I'm being given a different rate. I don't feel that my home has a different value. I feel pretty confident that my children will walk into situations and feel represented. And that is why I would say that the dominant culture reflects that perspective. And I think that other people who know far more than me who do this work would also agree with that. And it doesn't mean that it's right. It doesn't mean it's wrong. It doesn't mean there's anything wrong with me being who I am. But it does mean that other people experience this world differently.
Katrina Morse, one of the factors that can help prevent students of color from experiencing excessive discipline at school is having a teacher of color. I'm going to read a link here. So HTTPS colon slash slash WWW.GSE.Harvard.edu/news/UK/18 So HTTPS colon slash slash www.gse鸢号.edu/news/uk/18/06/ experiences hyphen teachers hyphen color. Is the Southwoodby School District interested in increasing the number of teachers of color within the school district?
I'd actually like to address that. We absolutely are. And we have folks who sat on a committee interviewing individuals and we scoured the country for someone to teach our ethnic studies course. We didn't have, my understanding is no person of color applied. They interviewed, we hired someone who I believe is going to do a beautiful job. But we keep talking about setting the table for people to be able to come here and feel comfortable. We did have an individual successfully interview and was offered a job. And that individual politely and carefully told us that they would be declining because they found a place that they felt more comfortable. So it is our work to create an environment where folks feel comfortable coming to work in an environment where they may not look like everyone else. And they, they are helping us to move that, that work forward. But it's not with, we are working very hard to recruit across the board. The other thing that I have to say, and folks are talking about our student enrollment, we've hired several teachers this year. We've had some retirements and we have some positions. And we have individuals who will be earning a very competitive salary, who are unable to find housing on the island, who are unable to find affordable housing on the island, who are struggling to find a rental. So number one, if you have a rental and want to rent to a teacher, please contact our HR department. But number two, they, that's legit. These are folks, we have someone moving here from Maine, somebody moving here from California. And, and that's a real issue. So we, we definitely have a housing crisis and an affordability issue. So, you know, to think, to think otherwise, I think is misguided. So anyway. But yes, we are working to create an environment where people of color would want to work here and be able to afford to live here.
Thank you. Tina Goodrich Langley, I'm very impressed with this group of school board members. I appreciate all the thought and work you've all done. Thank you for your work in thoughtfully address, working to address important issues and keeping our students safe. Again, I'm skipping some of these that do not address safety because that's what we're talking about right now.
I would like to thank the community members, though, who are aware that the curriculum changes we're making are part of the bigger picture. So those comments and those thoughtfulnesses are very appreciated and definitely something you could, again, address with Brooke, with Joe, by email or by other means in order to give your thoughts. You know, so appreciation for understanding of the big picture.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, we've got Kat Thompson in Oak Harbor has a couple of comments that didn't have a last name associated with them. So I'm scrolling back up to get those comments. Let's see here. Kat Thompson, is the bias theory you speak of the reason why the district contacted the sheriff on one student who threatened other students in March, in a past incident, but not the most recent threat?
Every time we have an issue or a concern, we evaluate it on its own. And we contacted law enforcement when it was appropriate. And we followed through on the other incident as appropriate and we will.
Another one from Kat Thompson, Andrea, what is your intention when drawing attention? What is your intention when drawing attention to minorities and negative statistics like that? Drawing attention to all these statistics is the very thing that creates these subconscious biases that you were speaking of earlier. And can you say the source of your statistics, probably recently specifically to all the school district or statewide or nationwide?
Sure. So the reason I brought up those statistics was because I was directly asked to cite the discrepancy between male and female students and students of different races and ethnicities. So I was providing the information I was requested for. Secondly, I personally would disagree. I believe that looking at those numbers and understanding those numbers, understanding where they come from, actually challenges our ladder of inference and creates a situation where those biases come to the foreground and become less present in our systems. And so I would disagree. And I think people who are engaging in doing this work and researching and looking at ways to shift this would say that looking at it helps. Also, the site I was looking at, if you just Google OSPI report card, you can look it up at a statewide level. You can also drill down to a district and to a school level. And then on the right-hand side, click on the diversity report, scroll down about two-thirds of the way down the page and you'll see the discipline data. We were looking at the state data for the purposes of looking at the largest sample size of students. But you can absolutely drill down to a district of your choosing.
Thanks. Andrea? And would we be correct in saying OSPI means Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction?
Yes.
I'm, thank you for that clarification, Marnie. I'm right, reading through these to find more comments that relate to this. Yep.
I just want to clarify, it was two separate issues when I last spoke. The first being that we have offered positions to individuals who have turned us down. I did not indicate whether they were people of color or white people, but they've turned us down. But we did offer a job to a person of color who indicated they were not comfortable here and they found a more comfortable spot. In terms of housing, that was an aside. We have offered positions to teachers who are struggling to find housing and the housing is unaffordable to those individuals. So they're trying to rent. They're looking off-island. They're looking in other places. I don't want to have it conflated that it was about race. Two separate issues.
Okay, I believe that we are through the comments on this, on this subject of school safety. If people want to continue individual conversations with a board member or the board as a whole, I encourage you to go to email and we will certainly do that. We're done with, so unless any of the board members have anything to add or Mr. Pullman or Dr. Moshe or anyone else, Kristi, or anyone else on the leadership team.
One last comment. I want to thank the board because you've been working together from 2 o'clock until 9:30 tonight after a day's work. And it's been an outstanding retreat and workshop. And I appreciate all of the time that you volunteer for this district. So thank you, school board.
Thank you. And Dr. Moshe, I just want to say thank you because this is a very long workday for you too.
And Dan.
And Dan, and Kristi.
And Kristi.
We have a couple of complimentary comments that I will just invite the board to read rather than reading them out here because they're not directly related to this. And with that, I'm going to just, I'd like to just address what we did in the retreat for those who are unable to attend. How we talked about goals for the superintendent that will be bringing up to vote at the next business meeting for the upcoming year. We've talked about the board self-evaluations that we did and we're working on goals for ourselves for the upcoming year. We've talked about how to bring students on to student reps on the board at the start of the school year, how we can start that process, talking about any, any policy changes that we think might be needed. What am I missing? I think that.
Superintendent goals?
Yeah, superintendent goals for Dr. Moshe, which we'll be voting on at the next business meeting.
Folks want to take three and a half hours, they can look at it on our, on our face or our YouTube link and see the thing in its entirety.
Brooke, in my breaking board protocol, if I give a little teaser so that people, because I think that some people may not, they might want the Cliff Notes version of our retreat. So the, the board, the goals that we are looking at for consideration do continue the equity work. They also focus in on restorative conversations with the community. There is an emphasis focused on student achievement data. But I would encourage you to read through it very carefully because it actually targets some of our students furthest from educational justice. So it's targeting what would be of benefit to our students with special needs, our highly capable students, our EL students and our students who have other areas that create challenges for them within the school system and focusing on ways that we can lift all students up. And then our third goal is focused on, it is 9:30 at night and it has gone away. Oh, transformational leadership and the trickle-down effect and ensuring that the work we're doing up here is reaching and impacting students. So none of those are set in stone because we have not voted on them. But if that is of interest to you, that conversation is at the beginning of the three-hour meeting.
I just wanted to state for those listening at home that the board does see all of the Q and A entries. And although during a board workshop format, we can't address comments that are unrelated to this evening's agenda, we do see those comments. And for community members wanting to engage in a dialogue about their input, we welcome emails. Brooke shared his email address. I'll share that mine is the outlier because it also includes my middle initial, ma jackson@sw.wednet.edu. But I just want to acknowledge those who have shared perspectives that we weren't able to read aloud due to this meeting format.
Thank you very much, Marnie. Yes, please, if you have comments or questions or dialogue, reach out at our business meeting. We will take public comment on whichever topic people would like to comment on. We will not engage in dialogue in those instances in almost every case. But we will accept those comments and listen to them and hear them. Finally, I want to thank everyone who stuck it out through this entire meeting. It's, the other board members are sick of hearing me say this, but I love workshops. I love workshops because we get to have that dialogue. We get to answer questions and get, and address concerns directly about the topics on the agenda. So thank you all for joining us and thank you all for speaking up. Are there any other comments from the board or leadership team? Okay, with that in mind, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Good night.